In this wall. I'm now going to open for those that wants to make input on the bill itself. As we've indicated that this is a public hearing. We are here to solicit your input on the bill.
Dit is die opsumming voor diegene wat niet de weerswinkels bijgewoond het niet. Is om die inlichting te geven zodat die weer wel oor dat gaan. Wat ons eindelijk wil heen en wat die doel is van hier die openbare verwoer is dat ie nou ie inzet kan lever oor hier die wetzondwerp. Zee of je dit ondersteun of nie en waarom je dit nie ondersteun nie. En wat ie graag verander of bijges het zal wil hee in hier die wetzondwerp. Dankie.
We usually start with the people with disability. If they are in the hall, we give them the first opportunity. Can we have them to go on the, on those chairs that are in the middle? Those that want to speak? Do we have them?
Si nabu, abandu abakuba ze glae, abakoyongukap.
Disabled people? Yes ma'am, are you disabled? Oh, you're not going to speak at the moment? Okay, you'll tell us when, at the time when you want to speak. Okay, can I see hands that want to speak so that I can note them? One. Three. Four. Five and six. Six, seven and eight. And nine. Nine and ten? Okay, and ten. I'm coming back again. Yes? Yes. We have, because our intention is to get all of you to speak. We're going to give speakers three minutes. Three minutes to speak, I'm going to time you there. Then I'm, I'm taking the first round, I'll come back for the second round. I'm taking ten, 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 ten. All of you, you're going to speak as long as we cooperate in terms of the time. Three minutes each. And then if you have, you are representing organization, you have a big paper. You've written all the chapters that I've indicated. You can summarize them in three minutes and submit your views to the table there, the one that I've introduced. I'm going to request all of us that were not given opportunity for now to keep quiet and listen so that we don't disturb the machines that are taking, assisting in taking notes. Please, if you want to speak, you take your friends and go outside and speak outside and then you come back. Will not stop you to go outside. Please, let's respect one another, listen to one another so that you don't even have to repeat of what other people are saying. You can say, "I'm, I'm, I'm seconding the first speaker on this matter" so that it then help us to record your inputs.
Please, as a belief, as you're in this hall is, moeny gesels nie, dienst mensen wat iets wil zeg, gaan buitenkant toe en praat buitenkant toe als julle met me kar wil praat. Maak sienke dat je jezelf je naam zee, vouw er het gaan en dat je jouw zaak stel hebe die microfoon, maar nie in die lokale gesels nie, as a belief, die mensen kan nie wer nie. Ek wil iets anders verdeidelijk wat van die boersitter afkom. As julle in die gehoor, die microfoon wil neem om jou zaak te stel, vir of teen die wetzondwerp. En jij wil nie jezelf in Engels of in Isikoza of in ander taal uitspreken nie. Maar jy wil verkes om jou zaak in Afrikaans te stel. Jy kan jezelf dat beter uitdruk in Afrikaans. Voel vrij om Afrikaans te praat, ek sal dan jou Afrikaans uit jou hartheid via jou vertaal na Engels, vir die, vir die paneel daar op die verhoog. Zo moet, as a belief, nie voelen die taal vir jou een probleem is nie. Als jy voel, al is jy tweetalig, maar jy voel jy gaan jou zaak beter in Afrikaans kan stel, is jy welkom. Se ons net van, is jy hier kom, jy moet jou, jy wil graag Afrikaans praat en dan staan het langs jou staan. En jou sunaas moedlik en jou hart zaak, on die paneel verdeidelijk, dankie.
We are here to solicit your views on the bill. I know that because we are members of parliament, you've not seen us for quite some time, you'll want to raise anything. Please assist us to, to deal with the bill. I'll, I'll, I'll assess if, if majority of you, you're not speaking about the bill would have to have another mechanism to, to, to take note of your issues.
Ek wil as a belief julle bij mooi frage. Hier is een publieke verwoer. Voor ons as a paneel van die nationale parlement voor julle kom toespreken en julle probleme kom aanleister met specifieke betrekking op hier die wetzondwerp. Ek weet julle zien ons nie bij nie of glad nie, maar as a belief, enige beheisingsprobleem is nie vir hier die publieke verwoer nie. Jy kan al steeds jou probleem gaan registreer by die tafel, maar ons wil specifiek jou mening oor, oor jy hier die wetzondwerp had nou an jou voorgelezen. Stem jy saam en vaar jy dit of stel, stel, stel jy teen dit? Dan moet jy zee waarom, jy moet jou naam geheen en ons gaan specifiek nou die geleentijd vandaag hier geheen vir hier die wetzondwerp. As a belief, julle sal gehoor word met beheisingsproblemen, maar ons wil voorkeer gehe vir die mensen wat hier die wetzondwerp wil bespreek.
There is Cornelius who has submitted something from the court. Please go to the table so that as they register, they must understand what is this all about? The person who have submitted the court.
Meneer Cornelius? Meneer Cornelius? Meneer Cornelius?
Das is een skreeving wat meneer Cornelius enge geeerd, ons sal verzoek laten die tafel nader om te gaan verdeidelijk wat daar de ver- een skreeving oorstaan.
Three minutes. Sharp on the point, the first person. So we must agree that if you pass three minutes, I'm going to stop you. So that we are, we are able to allow other people to speak.
I'll take two minutes of your time, Mr Chair, or si swam. The, my name is Inok Kamakentlan. I'm from the Torrens, a ward two. I'm the chaplain that deals directly with human settlement. Now you are coming with the purpose of the bill. I'm not going to get into the summary. You take from June 4, 1999, three times not knowing what to do with the building industry. Longdo, it doesn't make sense because it therefore means the human settlement department failed people because they take three times amending one bill. There must be something wrong with that. And then, the second part is that you allow EPVM leadership not to be here.
The what?
The leadership here played a very much part in it, not be here. And the, the, the sister who spoke about, she was delegated here, even not even mentioning a name, but was from a mayor's committee. There must be something of that. The question, 1.3 is to say, why does the BVM not allow E People's Housing Process? But it's part of the National Housing Code. And you are the national person. I can name names, Uchiyan, who's the teacher of human settlement, if he's still there, I'm not sure, because they are reshuffleish. E PHP, I funwa gehe, abak let, play, Roma's palawala. They doesn't even understand the people's housing process. I'll go to all these things. I think my one minute is gone now. It's social housing. I end the Torrens because it played a very have said that there's no land available and they took us to court. A court, the land, yavet. We are, there is nothing. It's a mushroom and we want to request you very humbly and sincerely, go get the Torrens, ozo born. And therefore, nin who are trusted by us of Banense Oversight, you doesn't do that. De funwa en jy boh ni te Torrens. Even if that will take you another three years. The, the bill, I will endorse or make the motion to say I will accept the bill. But nin afnege, you must be wake up. You must be wake up. Obaninga, thirty classelinga, agabandu billylil. Come 2024 and that will be term in your future. I'm gone.
Molweni Salo, i kamalam dinggu Inok Makenzana, pa a ward 22 eto Torrens. A ward two, tayabe, eto Torrens. Ngu Salo ke ocho en ne, neen kubos oksal swakabantu. Si Salo, ndia ikasa le, le pil, kudwa ge itati itleselite. Kuba isu ke paya gotzuun, eh, ka 1999, is slantlu, is slantlu, nige kan lungiswa. Dia ikasa, onakudwa ge fnege ikaulezzi swet. Eh, kwakona ge, di net kala kuba akukho, kwa kansi la, okanya kwa meya, eh, o suka ke, kwa so, kwa, kwa lungu, kika so tolopelela, Africa apa. Oso tolopebegeko, ye wa tumelange, o kansi la. Longdo ge ya stala bi sanati, abak EPVM. Eh, kwakona ge Salo, ndia kela ge committee, neenze, ndio twa oversight. News border la ngokwen, umbagwenze kandoni paya eto Torrens. Eh, kuba innens, indoe, enga lungangenz, kwa fsesi, intu pa. Kudwa ge ndia ikasi pil, kudwa ge maikaulezzi swet, inga tati itleselite, ngorosi.
Okay, my name is Mimi Tandrew Williams. I'm the ward councillor in Swallettemba. Mna, I support the bill. I want to get clarity on the issue if, if you want, you are building a house, for example. The process of building a house is too expensive in South Africa, for example. You have to start with a, with a plan, you pay thousands. In the municipality, you must pay 7,000, 7,500. In our case, I'm not sure if it's a national, eh, norm or policy. Then after a year, if you are not ready of, not been finished of not even started building your house, it's, it's lapsed that money, it lapsed. You must pay another 7,500 again because you are not ready. So, mna, I'm, 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 I want to get clarity, you know, from the, the, the committee and the, the this building society, go tee, how does it come that you are paying so much? I'm not ready, I've paid the 7,500, after a year it has lapsed, I have to pay again. We have experienced that, myself and other community members. So the municipality says hello. Secondly, the issue of title deed. When the house is being built, build a house now, build now, the house have a foundation, give a person a title deed. Because you are staying, you are having houses that don't have title deeds in our communities. Your RDP houses, there are houses that were built 1986, they don't have title deeds. People come to you as a council, they want title deeds for those, those houses. You go to the municipality, you don't get clarity. On the issue of asbestos, what is the bill saying about the asbestos? We want all houses not to be built in asbestos and those who have asbestos should be removed. Lastly, I must make a point currently, a committee. Here in Bredewele, we are having a project that is called Transex. That is having 8,000 houses that's supposed to be built. It's four years now. No one is staying in those houses. People are called by the municipality beneficiaries to go to those houses and they are being shown their houses and then after the, the keys are being taken. People know their houses since four years now. It's only 192 houses that are built there, that people are not staying here. The, the way you are staying in our communities, informal settlements, you know, people are staying. You know, whoever, because we are told, this project is not, the municipality is telling us it's not its, it's the municipality's project, the province's, not this project, the national's. Then whose projects is Transex, Kantika, Nyakanya, is it? Because no one is staying in that, in those houses. And people, you know, it's very emotional, we've got, oh mama here, that are beneficial, beneficial, abakama beneficial, they are here. You understand? Now you are told now, the NHRP, the National Housing, is the one supposed to give the, the tick that people should enter, we just hear it now, that there are cracks in those houses. That is that society that should give that. So can you please attend to that, even if you don't give answers now, if you can, and come back to do oversight in that Transex project, project, thank you, ngorosi.
Before you go councillor, go and, and, and give that information to the staff so that it doesn't get lost. Can we allow translation?
Molweni Salo, i kamalam dinggu Mimi Williams, dinggu ward councillor, abak Swallettemba. Eh, umbagisalo, esingawe, umbawe title deeds. Eh, esesinzu, zonke, es akue asnasi title deeds, oksola ngon 1986. Kwake ikona ne project, apo esinzu, esy 18,000, kwa tasuwa kwa kiwa. Kudo, ukutika ngo, akabikobantu, eh, abasala kwa esosinzu. Ngorosi san.
Hello? Morning, uh, my name is Kaya Belani. I'm a chaplain of Swallettemba Business Forum. I'm also a local contractor. Uh, mine is very simple ma'am, I've already captured some of the items that I wanted to speak about. But I also wanted to highlight some aspect on the bill, um, on the summary of the bill. Uh, first of all, I know that I agree with the bill, but there are issues that I also want to raise within the bill and also what, um, the councillor raised earlier on before me. Um, if you look into chapter 2.6, um, it says the establishment of a register of enrollments of a home prior to the commencement of the construction of a home builder. Mine is to actually add there that, um, you also need to develop, um, a local skill, um, home builders inspectors. Why I'm saying that we do not have enough home inspectors to actually come locally when we are doing, uh, um, construction, whether we're building houses privately or not. So you need as an NHPRC to actually employ people, uh, local, uh, inspectors to come in there. And also if you look at, also chapter 2.7, um, you speak about the Home Warranty Fund, but you're not, you're not actually, um, advising us how we're going to have access to that fund. So you also actually delegate more of information to those things. And also I want to also speak about the issue of Transex. Um, Transex, what the councillor was speaking about. Um, I was a contractor in that, in that project and I can tell you, it's a mess. It's a mess in, in, in terms of structural defects. It's a mess in terms of, of, of access to how, um, the councillor is speaking about. If you can come, you guys can come in, uh, to, to Uster, um, go and do an oversight in that, in that Transex because our people are actually in need of this house. We've been writing to, 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 to human settlement provincially. I can provide you with emails, I can provide with all of these things, asking about that Transex project. So we do have the information about that and also one accountability, because it's taxpayers' money. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you very much, that information, uh, we needed, uh, it is going to help us to deal with the matter. Can we then have, uh, we, we, we had the, the, the two people who came to present. I just want to, so that we, we are able to allow majority of you to speak. Can we agree that because it's us who are writing, eh, we are allowed, if you speak in Kosa yourselves, then they translate it in English to us so that we are able to capture. If you speak Afrikaans, they should then be able to translate in English. But those that speak English, there is no need for translation, can we agree on that? There is no need for translation for yourself, but for us now it's us who are writing. Agreed? Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning everyone, my name is Noorah, my surname is Van Kerveld. I'm a volunteer in the ANC office in Stellenbosch for, I think, over 14 years now. And, um, I, I actually gonna address questions more than anything else and because there's this stuff that we picked up in our ANC office. But before I do that, I want to ask you, why is it that only 200 people were invited here? This is, this is an issue that really needs attention. So I would appreciate it if you, as the human settlement department, will consider coming again. Say, human settlement coming to the people, I would appreciate that, thank you. Why everything is going up, a bread is 17 rand now, but 3,000, 3,500 rand is still what you have to qualify to get a RDP house. Why don't you up there to between 7, 5 to 10,000 rand? And another thing is this, the people that are not qualifying, it means they will never ever get a house. There will never be a house owner because they don't, they earn too much for a RDP, but they earn too less for a house. So I would really appreciate it if we can look at that as well. Cape Wineland's have a subsidy and that subsidy is for farm owners to fix their farmhouse where the farm, um, people is staying in. I want to know by human settlement, how is it possible that they can fix a private house? They are private and they, so how is that possible? If they can do that, you have to be consequent in your dealings. If they can do that, it means in, in paneel, that is, in Stellenbosch, near to Stellenbosch, is a place they call the gif. There is plus minus 15 families for between 15 to 20 years staying at the gif without any resources, no water, no electricity, there's nothing. But, but our municipalities is giving services to farm owners, but they say that's a private property, they can't do nothing there. How is that possible? Thank you, I also have a, I also have an application form. Cape Wineland's have an application form for the farm owners. Bylaws. If we look, let me give an example, as human settlement, it's our, the human settlement responsibility to, that is the reason why they changed the two human settlement from housing because you have to make, you have to settle the human in the environment. So a, a, a homeless person is also, uh, a human. They, there was a bylaw here in, in, um, um, Cape Town. The, the, the homeless people was charged 1,000 rand for sleeping on the pavement. That is an inhuman law, an inhuman bylaw. How is it possible that national government is not attending to, to inhuman bylaws like that for instance? Not just, not just human settlement, all departments that's affected by inhuman bylaws. Why don't we attend to that? Why let we, let stuff like this lie?
Thank you very much ma'am, your three minutes is over, you can, no, no, you can go and, uh, uh, go and register those things there. Go and register those things there. Proceed, next person.
Okay. Africans. Okay, so i kamakla pr. Okay, okay. Madame Tsje? Dat is a voorig, oh sorry, my name is Laurence Seels. I stay in Stellenbosch, I'm the chairperson of the Backyard Dwellers Forum. So I thank God, it's the first time in my life, it's the eerste keer in my leven, wat ek so na die mensen van die parlement kom, altijd julle op TV gezien. Maar my probleem is, ek blij in a RDP huis. Ek ondersteun die bil en ek ondersteun die bil ook nie. Ek blij in a RDP huis. En ek het nog nie titel, hoe zee je? Titel, titel zee. Nou, alle het ose huisje kom rechmaak en daar val kraken in die mieren in. Gaan ons naar die manse palate toe dan zee alle, dat zee alle probleem nie. Die contractor het kla die huis kla rechmaak. Alle lach okieve oos in en gaende die toekoms van ose huis nie. En die contractor bouw die huis zoals hij wil of lus het om die huis te bouw. My other question is, that human settlement, die bil is prachtig. Hij het een raar Hij heet een ramwerk, maar binnen in die bill, abius die bill voor die backyard dwellers forum. Die bill abius die mensen wat achter in achter mensen se jaat blij. Wat nederens in die bill wordt daag gevoersien voor mensen wat op genade in aan de mensen se jaat in blij nie. Wat ik probeer zeg is, ie gaat mij zeg, maar alle is nie informele settlement nie. Nou, informele settlement is mensen wat op een stuk gron blij en daar wordt dienst aan alle gegeek. Nou, dat is, nou, ze krijgen mensen wat in een achter jaat in blij. Wat vermaakt wordt van water, krachelen, betaal 1,500. Is mensen wat tax betaal. Is citizens of this country do have the same right, is any citizen of this country, they vote, they do everything. But by the end of the day, they are nothing. Zo ik wil he, daar moet gekijk wordt naar zulke soort mensen toe van. Dan identificeer ons grond aan die manse parletij van, van Stellenbosch. Oes sit in gesjaals muttela, dan gaan die deputy mayor ook samen oes om grond te identificeren. Op die einde van die dag, dan wordt daar op die gron verkoop aan die rijk mensen. Maar daar kan die huisje gebouw wordie. Alle hou oes mensen aan de leentie, alle verneder oes mensen wat in die achter jaat in blij, alle abius oes mensen en this is not acceptable. I thank you.
Thank you, thank you sir. Proceed ma.
My name is Lawrence Seels. I'm African, I'm from Stellenbosch. My name is Lawrence Seels. I'm from Stellenbosch. I thank you. This is the very first time in my life that I can see you face to face. I've always only seen you on TV. Thank you for that, it's a great day in my life. I live in an RDP home. I support this bill, but on the other hand, I also do not support the bill. I will tell you why. I, up until today, do not have a title deed for my RDP home. There are cracks in the walls and the house is not up to standard and it's not of quality. When I go to the municipality, they say it's not their problem. It's also, my other problem is that this is a beautiful framework. This bill has got a stunning framework, I thank you for that. But you are not making provision in this bill for the backyard dwellers. These people are being abused. Remember, they are not a part of human, human settlement because they don't live in a settlement as such. They are staying on the grace of other peoples, on their grace in their backyards. For that reason, as I said, they cannot resort under human settlement. What they pay tax, they pay rent, they pay water, electricity. They should have the same rights as all the other people. Please look after these people. We go with the deputy mayor of Stellenbosch to identify land. They go with us, we go together. But then that same land that we identified together are being sold off to rich people. It's abuse and a violation of my people. Please, I thank you.
Next.
Thank you very much. My name is Nsasa Adoro. I'm from Trakanstein municipality and I reside in Ward9. I would also like to echo a bit on what the previous speaker have spoken about. Firstly regarding the bill. Me seeing this process and really appreciating it, that it comes to us as the people, is that the bill is not yet to be accepted or rejected, but we are still in the making, hence we are participating as well. So thank you for the opportunity. However, I would like to indicate on some issues that we are experiencing in our municipality pertaining a human settlements project, a catalyst project which is called the Flakalan Housing Development Project. Now, in relation to that project and what the bill reflects to, as the point 1.4 says of the economic transformation part. Whereby also you find that it indicates the provision, the contractual provisions to ensure sustainability in the market and also the development of the industry.
Can you take the mic a little up? Because there is lot of echo on your mic.
So also the contractual provision that is indicated here, which is to sustain the market and develop also the industry. We have come with a bit of problems in seeing that unfold in a project of that nature. That we are finding that even stakeholders in that project and official are not adhering to what is being offered also within the, the bill. So it's things like that that we are sitting with. And this project was aimed at alleviating the burden of housing within our municipality, particularly also looking at backyards. But also you will find that reflection on the waiting list is not really advantageous to the backyards, but rather consider other evictees like your farm evictees and other old forms of evictees. And also people of, of informal settlements, rather giving them a greater own advantage in, in allocation than the backyard dwellers. And when you have seen in our municipality, there was a norm whereby this project is far near to Mbakweni, where it's the area where mostly the opposition of our administration is at. And you'll find that the service delivery level is not the same, similar into areas where it's the ruling party. Where in the areas where it was developed in the Paul East Saro and also, and also near Peniel, you will find that the allocation is made for those people who is, is a proximity. But when it comes to the development which is in Mbakweni, it overlooks the backyards which are in Mbakweni. And also the people of Mbakweni which are benefiting, it mostly looks at the informal settlement, which is all good and great, but also we as the people are looking at fairness and also having a problem with fairness. And also we have seen that the promotion of administrative justice, accountability when it comes to local, local government and the availability of national when, in this project that I've mentioned, being a catalyst project and all, is, is very scarce. And also the accountability process, we don't see it as the people when a municipality or a local authority have been found wanting. The other issue, once the minister of, of, of human settlement once mentioned that she is the lucky of the three ministers to have the right to expropriate land without compensation. But yet when it comes to human settlement issues, you found that we are told by our local authorities, there is no land to alleviate that. So we also were wondering whether Akaya, that the promotion of administrative justice are put in place, what is happening in instances like that? And also when it comes to training of, 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 of youth in this project, you will find that municipal, uh, authorities will tell you they don't have service level agreements that are in place with the TIVAD colleges and training providers. Yet within the process also of unfolding, the, the duration of the project is, is moving forward and then that opportunity will even lapse without young people being developed and being given skills. Also you will find that there is a provision within the construct, uh, contractual provision, which ensures that there is a 30% local development for subcontractors, SMMEs, labour and things like this. This issue tends to be a hindrance and up to a level whereby people's lives are at stake. Because it also comes to a hindrance and indicate, indication of construction mafias. So we would like the bill to have a look at it and also look at its dispensation because the power of dispensating is 30%, who lies within the principal contract. So we feel and see that it could be better managed if it would lie within the authorities from the onset, so that procurement can be met and all the other, the other regulations which are to be met. So we, we, I really thank the opportunity that you have given me. And by the way, I'm representing the Mbakweni Development Forum as the here secretary. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can you go and, and, and write some of the issues there? Thank you. Next.
My name is Bolserle, my name is Kalanga. Eh, ik am alam du komu sa wakom Bobosi. Was it Trakanstein Ward9? I'm a chairperson of a youth development agency, Trakanstein. I'm also a provincial leader of an Economic Freedom Fighters, which is called EFF. Ansobam temna bazal bam, uh, tu komi dana zimlinge. Koto agen, di konanji, di kola forni na. Sa ushto, la kozusamla konanamna, di shepa kozusia konan. Eh, bazali, bati ababa tu kabeza kuti. Uh, ma se accepte le mama random basni gayona. Owamumbo zo mna, eh, mshalo ngapambili, eh, na bi eh, 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 slalo. Je sizo tata le mama random, ku, ba sizo accepte. Bi ziti ni demands za se kali. Um, za gyallo, ba sidi 2005, bi sini demands, bi sitis funi zinzu, si richi na lap, kozi province la pa eh, preta vili. Since 2005, zezzi pizindo so zenzili, je go so sentis ndweja. Um, za gyallo, uti ba bu te, bu ne zinzu, 2005 bi ziti 20, oes kele yo. Oes temi seti nabashali, uzawke zinzu bi ziti 100. Stalele tinabashali, ba bashali, an kwa zangu, ufigale kwa zinzu bi 100, di kei zinzu bi 20. Asikwazu velu tata nje indosengaya zinoba, si tata klabekte ni, ezzi za previously, i issues nezindosengaka kritiguze. Andi kree bi kabein vesa. Le yom saba, i, i, ndo yom saba, ayon ngaki bashali, yom saba nguwetu. Andi layo di teta without any hesitation, without any fear. Yom saba ukona bashali, aso yik ndo yom saba, si EFF. Eh, ben di chilokem na ba, I'm a provincial leader of the Western Cape, eh, eh, as in Kasha, my best my portfolio, the Economic Freedom Fighters. So ba, bazali, ababa ngalali ngati, uwezbi unume ya ubale kandja, nusu tiba, uume ya kota nguyelu, no fini gile, mmamele ezzi indo. Ume ma kanga ngalali ngati bazali, okanyasika slaluini, ta itlagi ilba kuela ba kozutati esngana bi, kobume ya kwazu, ngabi ik o, sapo zo konso tule, abi izkalazo, izkalazo za bashali. Eh, lu sileta, lu sileka mani, tinasi, sileka mtsu kizoo, watinzinesi, ma chitumbina, sivika mani, eh, na, ukaftable, itlondo. Ma senza ababa na kaftable, unkaftable, ba veli mtsu na tuseva, itlondo, ba nyansile gile, ba veli mtsu kseva, ma ba yive na, ba ngoba, niti indo, ba za ubale kaba ndo koko. Ah, ku, funi kebezis niti, le chonga kwa nguka, beko kwa, aba, aba, bepeti le province. No, petu maspa, lutumelu mdaan, um tumela njani, um tu, kota angusfunaya nasku, kota geakon ngaki, ma pinne nko begek. Okay, sina zezzi zinzu bi siti bi skiwe pa. Ezzi zinzu, zezzo ne kwa baani, eh, ndo uku, ndo ezimisato zenzige community li. Kuzo rechabandwa na, la kwenze kindu zimbi, nifuna ku tukwanzekozondo. Kobeza zezza, zezza nababa ndo zinzu pa, tuaku kizinzu ap, ezzi nganaband. Nifuna zenzige kindu zinzu, funa ku rechabandwa na, nite nibone, ba isera, ba abanda banazinzu. Okanyana itanda, ba aband, ba ntsu lizo watin, kungene nimvul. Kobe zinzu zezza naband zazinzu, okanyana itanda londo, ba aband, ba bi poa, ndo ini indifisaka mani londo, ma pinne nko begek. Eh, um za gyallo, kutedi ni chinch, bi sizo hallelujah zetina, kutedi zoi chinch. Le, 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 le mama random, ni chinch, nkeza teziti ni, kabeke te ni, kalomazu ntsinda bolela. I thank you, kamaku.
Good day Chair and the panel and fellow South Africans. My name is Mosam Bobosi. I am the youth chairperson of the Trakanstein Development Agency. Eh, I want to say that as a young person, I also want to respect the decorum of this meeting. Now, the question that I have, Chair, is that up until now, what steps have been taken in order to allocate houses to the people? Because in this area, people don't have houses, but there were many promises that were made. My second concern or question is that we had a councillor here who was speaking on behalf of the mayor. Where was the mayor? Because the mayor is the one who's supposed to be accountable. And also the warehouses that were built, but no one has been able to be allocated. And then now, if things are not happening, will make things to be difficult and people such as the mayor who are supposed to be accountable, will make them uncomfortable because they don't do their jobs as well. And then in those houses, my other question is who is going to be, to benefit as well? Because eh, many bad things can happen in those houses if we leave them as they are. I thank you.
Sorry, which houses are you talking about? The one that was, 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 what? Which houses, the leader of young people?
Um, I did it in puti tetila ba, bi houses ba apa. Le wesmini, ardi pe houses ba zizi, ya kakamba ba ziti. Kamu ve?
You are referring to the houses, the houses that were spoken about by the ward councillor?
Yes, yes. I'm referring upon that, yes.
Okay, oh, thank you very much. Proceed ma. Proceed.
Can I begin?
Yes.
Goei mora amal. Ik is van ochen be voorreg. Om i te kan staan. Ik is Katrina Aris van Rafisne Ent. Nochnader. Ik is Katrina Aris van Rafisne Ent. Klein plekje na bij Kialiden. Bi tefi el al da ooit wasning. Maar ik wil van ochen vraa dat iel my, my tranen en my acht zal raakzi. Want oes is in een arm gemeenschap. In een baie, baie arm, arm gemeenschap. Waar mensen, maar eindom ekere die RDP, RDP huisje. Bij ons dit ek een probleem eet. Mensen heet die gaal om een bouwplan op te trek nie. Uh, alle weer dave, sei soone, sei soones, wille sa afhankelijk, ba sei soon werke. Ik is van ochen hier om te pleik bei, bij iel, dat ons mensen, dat iel in die bouw moet inbringen, om ons mensen te jaal ver, aszule an bouwings aan alle huisje doen. Dat, missapale ons mensen moet jaal voor bouw planne. Die bouw, um, inspectier kom baie leke bij ons blik in, dan stoppele ons mensen, zeg jy kan nie verder bouw nie, um, wan jy het niee plan nie. Ons mensen verdien 800, 600, minera zit, in de brood kost 16 raan. Hoe kan alle nog gaal werkesit voor een bouwplan? Ik kom van ochen en vraa voor iel, om in die bill in te werk as a blief, om ons mensen te jaal voor twee vertrek, drie vertrek bouw planne diri missapale. Dat alle voor ons mensen togeving maak. Da is de een kwere wat ek et. Ban is hartseer. Ons mensen bouwsum in die nacht, wan morgen ochen is huis klaar. Da kan alle die afbreke. So das onwettig. Ja, dan is een nog een kwere wat ek. Wel baie gerafoor. Die ma de pa, et ansu gedoonen die 19s, 1988, 1998, fisjaal bouw schema. Alles gesubsiderd, die staat, die huis is gebouw, so das nou die eindom van die ma nie pa met kinders. Ma sterwe, so pa heet die alleen rech op eindom. Patrou, kinders wordt teruggesit, so die tweede vrouw heet dan nou rech op die eindom. Das my tweede vraag. Ik wil vraa dat die bill as a blief, of iel ons kinders moet beskeren? Wan pa kan nie net wil trouw met de tweede vrouw en vergeet zijn kindersi. So daar wordt die rech afregeer voor die tweede vrouw of voor die tweede man? Um, das verkeerd. Wan my ma en my pa heet my naam opgesit voor subsidieren voor een huis bij die staat. Maar nou is my mama weg en my pa vat daar aan de vrouw. So dat wil zeg, die tweede vrouw krijt die rech op eindom. Wat wordt van die kinders van die eerste iviler? Da is my kwere, my tweede pin.
Thank you very much.
Maar ik et nog een ikie.
No, we, we have agreed for three minutes, my dear one. If you are not done, you can write some of the issues there. Three minutes.
My name is Katrina Aris, I'm completely used to the game.
We can hear, we can hear. We can hear, we can hear.
My name is Katrina Aris. I'm from Rafirs on the end, it's a very small place just outside Kalidin. I'm not sure if you've ever been there, but please, I come here today. I just want to say firstly, I'm privileged to be here, I want you to know that. It is a privilege for me to be here today. But I'm standing in front of you, with tears in my eyes and sorrow in my heart, and I want you to see me. Please, I support this bill, yes and no. The first problem I have is that we receive RDP homes, we are grateful for that. But please remember, we are seasonal workers in that area. We depend on an income only during the season, that we have work. Therefore, we have absolutely no money for building plans, to add additions to these homes. So if we want to enlarge our, our home, or do a add-on, we have to submit a building plan, for which we do not have the money. The building inspectors comes to our properties, and then they stop the building. Because they say you do not have submitted and have approved building plan, but we cannot afford it. It's a problem. Secondly, you know what we do, we build during the night. So the next morning, when they get there, it's done. Then they don't know we've built, that's all we can do. I also want you to add to this bill, that what happens if my mom and dad, who applied for housing subsidy, from the government in the nineteen eighties? I think it's eighty-eight or eighty-nine. It's called a self-built schema, those days. My mom died in the interim, so my dad remarried. Now his second wife, is the owner of this property. What about the children? Can that please be described in the bill? That is my question. Thank you, I had a small little third one, but you said I must go to the table, thank you.
Goye daf, my name is Patrick Frey. Ek represent for the backyard Stella Bos, kuzo ke bigs komiteerlet, be big sixteen. My concern is, saal di bou, ver di gene yal, wat in, in i'tachtacher jare, hais gekret, hais diet gekret. And hale is twe vertrek eises, and dre vertrek eises, and is more as, more as sive to acht persone wat ina hais blei. And, dan is di fabrike van i asbest, is toge maak. Ma da eise set nog muin asbest dakke, wat di mensa siq maak. Andi mensa, gan doet van dai, van dai gaf, wat di asbest afge. Andi municipal besliit net hale, kan ni, di mensa yal ni, wan, hale ti bagroting for i mensa wat hale, eh, divs gekreti. And, dan is my concern ook that, van di mensa et nog, baita toilets. Van i o mensa muin an i reen loop, na baita toilets tu, om, om hale, eh, kesa gaidan, baita toilets agad maak, wat umtren, tintot, eh, eh, fifteen tree van i hais apset. And, di umstande gede van i reen, is da, and as di. Ho kom et, di, di government zu laat besliit, om hier di inlichting bekend maak? Terweil hier di inlichting al, van nineteen, ninenintag af ankom al. Ho kom et di government besliit om het nou te bekend maak? Dat kon froore gadoon gewiset, dan kon na mener backyarders gewiset, in acht menses a plase. As wat het nou bekend maak is, terweil di wereld nou vor backyarders. And, neder setangs as, ho kom et di government ni detei trakom, to di dang ansprekasat kabiset, na ri mensa tuni, danki.
My name is Patrick Frey, I'm from Stellenbosch, Ward sixteen. Yes, I support the bill, but I want to know from you. Will it be possible, to help those who received a home with a title deed, in the eighties? These homes, has only two rooms, with an outside toilet. Sometimes up till eight people, will be housed, in a two-room dwelling. The people who have been living there, still have asbestos roofs. The municipality just says, I can't help you, there's no budget for that. And as I said, what about outside toilets? It's like ten fif- fi- fifteen yards out, outside of the house. It's, it's winter, it rains, it's cold. We have to go outside, to use the toilet. And the last thing I want to know is, why did the government, wait until now, to sop, to bring out a bill like this? If you acted far sooner, there would have been far less backyard dwellers, and human settlements, thank you.
Thank you very much. The other ten? One, two, three, four, five. Oh, don't, don't, three. No, no, Stella Bos, sit down, go back, go back, go back, all of you, go back. Go back and raise hands. Go back and raise hands. It's one, go and sit at the. Can you, can you remove those two people?
This one is the last person.
Oh, one.
Is it the last person?
This was the last person? Oh. Oh, we have not, paradiji si. Oh, okay. It's one, two, three, eh, four, five, you're number five, number six, number seven, number eight, eh, number nine, number ten. Oh, disabled person. Can I, can I, number ten, I'm, I'm done with my, my list, I'll come back again. But I must remind you, who are here for bill. So anybody who has got a problem of the houses, go and register those issues there. Because I could see that you have been provoked, you want to raise your problems, but you are here for the bill. Please, if you have the problems with your houses, or anything related to service delivery issues, please go and register there. Here I want only people who are going to talk about the bill. If you are not going to talk about the bill, I'm going to stop you. Agreed?
Ek wil et weh duidlik stel. As ya e behuisingsprobleem het, gan rech it na dai tavel, gan registreer your probleem. Hier di publike verwer, het te doen, med di wetse ontwerp wat fi ille voorgele is. So ek wil weet, of ille hi di wetse ontwerp goed keer, en of ni? As it ja en ni is, kan ya di wetse ontwerp besprek, of ya pentelig, insete, or di wetse ontwerp? Mensa asa blif, ek ga ya stop. Ek ga ni ille ente krem te praat, as she net gan praat, or behuisingsprobleme ni, danki.
Um, there was a issue that somebody said to us, you're talking about something else, we've given you petition, you have not responded to the petition. So we are going to the area, as we move out of this meeting. So we are handling your petition. Um, let's have number one, three minutes. Can we be orderly, please? Can we be orderly, we're dealing with the bill. It's not an imbezo, please. Um, I know that, when you see members of parliament, you want, eh, you want to ventilate your issues. We acknowledge that. That's why we've brought lot of staff, that your issues will be captured. And then, when I summarize the meeting, I will tell you what we are going to do with your issues.
As a blif, ek an et weh stel. Ek verstaan dat ille ons nou siin, for i erste keer, as ille van i parliament. And ek verstaan ille wil baye grah, ille probleme uitpraat. And ille, wi ille gevoel voor ons ge. Ma as a blif, nou ber di wetse ontwerp, ons sal an i ende fi ille geleent eit geem te registreer, and ille probleme fi ille daar uitsorteer, danki.
Eh, goye midaf, ek is Cornelia Loepser, and ek is a old gemeenskap werker. Um, di tai et nou, ek is van Syris, Ward vier. So ek wil grah ons parliaments leder groet. I just wanted to say, honorable members of parliament, I'm greeting you, in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ. And to all the other people here who assist us, the administrators, and all of them, we thank you for this opportunity. And then will ek say, ek ga no African English kee bakapra, diel mevyskwen. They never want to say, I support totally this bill, absolutely. Ma, da is nek, paar inspecte ini bou in, wat ek wil lich, ek ga ni lang praat ni, wan, ek et gewerked i. What ek wil fi ek se, di inspecte, wat ek hier kom optellit, is twe point nine, nek on nine.
Two point nine?
Ja. Eh, eh, as ek spraat hier, van di wetse ontwerp, en ons spraat hi van di doel van voersinen, dan kom ek bij ein ding. And this is a very, very, very big question, and a, and a big, it's a life-threatening problem. Because, here you say, you say hi that di gesonded inspecters, supposed to be when the houses been built, to build, be there every time, all day, but they not. Hale is ni daan ni, ek et fi ek se, eise wat gebou is nou in Syris. Dan wort ya eise afgege, an mensa, and as jay were, abwort di dak afgebay, of i mire fal plat, of eh, vesan i. Of da somske ni eise drein, baita drein ni, wa, so ek onesteen, as i net kan sekermak. That di gesonded inspecters, and ek se ni, all di gesonded inspecters van ille land ni. Ma ek praat specifiek nou, van Syrisa gesonded inspecters, di municipality bitzenberg. So, that is a problem, and that you inspectes, what eise, what eise muut, eh, kom afge, and wat muut se, ma eise is rech, a mens kan daan gaan doen, verstaan i? And then is di eise di regni, and a kan a mensi daan gaan doen ni. Ha fali eise opje op bekar, of i win kom, ni kom bayi di dak af, like that. The other thing, what I wanted to say is, di eh, eh, di, di, di wetse ontwerp, se hi van regulasis. Some municipalities don't do that. Ek wi ni, hale ke, hale di goed nou meere. And ek et gewerk, eh, eh, hale ke government in housing dai jare, ma ek is nou al, o, ek is tweentsefendek jare, otsu, ek wi ni nou meere, hoe werke ni. Ma, otsi tge leer, dat muut gespecificeer wort, ons beja des, ons gestremdes, ons eh, but it doesn't, eh, it doesn't happen like this, med you don't, even, if you see this house, then you will see is youngsters. I was not even on the, op, op, op eh, registratie, I'm still, what, because this is things, where the bill say di, that you have to look, eh, med ille muut sekermak, that di mensa, hale rech gehbehandel wort, na tele eise. Ma dit, funi plas, in sekere municipality ni. So, honorable member, I'm telling you, please investigate this thing, this bill is hundred percent, hundred percent. But will the municipalities allocate this bill, the way it's supposed to be? As a blif, that is all what ek wil geset, ek wil ni lange prati, and baye danki.
I'm Cornelia Loepser, from Syris, Ward four. I support this bill one hundred percent, and thank you very much, good afternoon. From the honorable members, I greet you in the name of Jesus Christ, and I totally support this bill. I appreciate this opportunity. I am a retired community worker, I worked for housing many moons ago, but I'm retired today. I just want to say to you that, according to point, two point nine of the, of the, eh, bill, you explicitly states that there will be health inspectors, and building inspectors, to hand over these properties or homes to us. But, they are not there. I want you to understand, that although the bill states, that they have to be there, they not there. I'm not talking for the whole of South Africa, I'm speaking about Syris in this case only, I'm from Syris. I just want to say to you, those homes are not quality building, eh, eh, homes, they are not quality building, eh, projects. The roofs blow off, there's no outside rain, hence the health inspectors, where are they? Sometimes the walls fall flat, on top of you, they crack. I want to say again, this is a wonderful bill, it's a fantastic opportunity. My biggest concern is, that it's not monitored, and not implemented correctly, and upheld in the correct manner as which it is intended. I just want to say as well, the bill states that pensioners and old people that are on the waiting list must get preference. There's youngsters on, on these homes, they stand empty, young people, how did they get these homes? How did that happen? And lastly, I just want to say, thank you again, I plead with you, please monitor this. Implement this bill, and make sure that the building inspectors, come around, and they do what they are supposed to do, with regards to the quality. Thank you very much again, I will not keep you longer.
Thank you very much.
Goye mora, komiteer, goye mora, chairperson, goye mora, support. Eh, ek wil mora se, ah, madag se, an amal ibana, di publik wat belangrik is. Ek hat vanag speometeit, wan ek et apa goekis di cias blif wat ek wil anra. Ek wil erst na began, ek support ni bou, ma ek wil olet, et oni ciasa anda brang, da da, os weet, ho kom oza as, za eis, dat os publik participet, so that oso goekis kan brang na di tavel tu. Wat ek dank, in vorespreke, redet ok angara, as da da, as eise wat was gebou is voor nineteen ninety eight. And, di baye van eise, das ni net a montiki ni, ma ek ha do praat, or montiki, because dat gebier in montiki. Wa di municipality, di van woonerik vat ni, ille, so sae met, van meneer vatte voreset, da is nog steeds asbest dakke, so das ek mag fitse se, eh, ek support it, ma da, na da eise mu no gekik wort, because of i ende van di dak, as da di eise wat gebou is, in a partit stelsel. Da mu se no net anding, hoe en wat umstande gede ai mensa tot verdag tu lewe, because hoe lega eise nou? As os net, as os net voersinen ma, van nineteen ninety eight. Ma ek ha it nou, ek weet, ek mu no goekis vanag praat, wan ek et redelig baye goed wat ek wil weerge. So ek hoop me frau is bet me.
Do not worry, it's downstairs, this is my job, you just go on.
Da, ek ha nou, ek, 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 ek ha nou ni geset, ek is di cias person, van i montiki gemeenskap, voerup op montiki. So ek praat for hot sive ein, hot twelve, dai was de hot sive wafer na gepraten. Nou kom i weg for di supporters. Ek praat do van hot twelve, and hot twelve is da, in twe desen, in twe, twe, eh, twe desen is eise gebou, di kampa di se na was, BKS. Di kampa di di eise ko bou, sietin vierkantes, weembeeter hotsbeet, amal weet, wat se wetgever ba, dit is clearly beweist, da di komiteer sal popa, hale anda muet set, om for province doopto, because di is nou nesener, province doon is housing. And as er i zal komana, in a legi os menses, a taitel diet, na di ek spaahebe dit, wat se vijf jaar, innere krak in yo eise, da kan se bi di fonds ga, ga anzudun, ma os onfang iers was taitel diet, na dai dit. So clearly, da mu it angekik wort, so that a sekere maak wort, os mensa, se levensra van aner c. A c nou ga niter, ek kik, bij voerbeeld, an way twelve, da, as, van di projekt wafer na gepraten, eh, waar BKS gebou is, in twe desen, twe desen, in twe. Clearly was da koripsi, and dat muet one di andere brang wort, because that was a for di falke. And al ya ke keer as us komana vergader, da se mensa ni, os va de tu, dus gaat tu. And as er i zal, nags gebier a oeri, so ek vraaft cias blif, om sekere te maak, om daana aandertige BKS, or montiki da da, ingedoom wort, so that os mens umstande ke vananer. Net langsam, eh, wa, wa di eise no gebou is, BKS so in i beeg. Da is was a plaik, Mountain View, ek bestaan nou al vijf jaar, da is aghen nin tag okke, wa da staan. Tot is wat nou praat met c, da mensa ti wateri, da mensa ti kraki, da mensa ti lichtani, da mensa ti toiletani. Clearly os kreni servicei, and that is a beweist, ek wil olet nou sami da.
Thank you very much.
Danki.
My name is Calvin Pekir. I am from Montiki, Ward 12. I support this bill, yes and no. I want to bring to your attention, before 1988, 1988, the municipality built homes, but they do not take responsibility for what has been built in the apartheid years. You have heard from the previous lady that asbestos roofs are still a thing in Montiki. These problems, as I said, derives from apartheid. But now, I was talking about Ward Seven. I will now talk about Ward 12, 12 in Montiki. Homes were built by BKS in 2000s, 2001. Seventeen square meters. We know what the bill says, Chair. This corruption that took place there, provincial must be monitored. After five years, your maintenance claim lapses. Some of us doesn't even receive our title deeds before the five years lapse. Clearly, something is wrong. It calls corruption. It screams corruption. Then there is a place that I want to also bring to your attention. It's called Mountain View. Ninety-eight houses were erected. Shacks. Houses are actually better, but shacks. No water, no electricity, no sanitary, no services. What is happening there? I just want to bring it to your attention. But I want to say, thank you very much for the opportunity. I greeted you, Chair, the public and all the support systems that you have provided for us. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair. I want to say, I am a supporter of your brief. About your...
Your name?
I am Andre van Veek. And my problem is, we are all coming to listen to what you or what the voice you have for us on paper. But if we step out and if we step out, then we will have paper, as I said, and the floor is rummed. We will not get it to the people. You came here for the first time. And after a long time, I was in Montiki. My problem is in Montiki, I am in the Langaberg Street. The problem is, there is just not available. But 20 years ago, it was still built. And my reason is, Montiki or Langaberg Street is in five rural areas. Bonneville is in Magreger and so on. And at the end of the day, housing is a problem. We can't... There are eight people in the area. And there is a vision made, as I said, to build new buildings. Because that comes first 20 years. And the problem is, we have water and toilets. I believe in Mountain View, I do security. But my problem is, that is the safety for my children who go to school. The winter is over. There were people who were outgrew. Come back, so at the end of the day, that is a problem. I say that, bye, thank you. I know, if the people are scared, then it is not good. But thank you, that is a problem for the rest.
My name is Andre van Veek. I am from Montiki. Afternoon, Chair. I want to thank you for this. We came here today to listen to this bill and what you propose on paper. I just want to say that I feel that when we walk out of here, that paper will land in the dustbin. It means nothing to us. Thank you for the time to come to Montiki. It's the first time that I see you. But I have a problem with certain issues of this bill. I want to support it, but as I said, I've got issues. I live in the Langaberg Street, or I am from the Langaberg Street, which includes Bonneville, Ashen and Montiki, where I am from. We cannot be backyard dwellers. Because the homes that are on the waiting list comes way too late to be allocated. So we can't be backyard dwellers. There is just no opportunity for that. Also, there are no services with these dwellers, and it is not safe. When my children wants to go to school, they are not safe. I know that it is not nice to hear these things. And it is not always nice standing here in front of you behind a microphone. But I just want to thank you for your time and for your patience and for listening to me today. Thank you.
I am here. And I am here. I am here. And I am here. I have been watching you. On social development. And now that we are on housing, I know how vocal you are in issues of the matter. And I support the bill. Because as companies, they come and go. So I think that is cool. Depending on the time, I am going to the town. And it is like 1950s. When asbestos was present. And I am wondering how we go about and see challenges and asbestos as well at the time. If you care to know, the TB is very, very rife as well at the time. I am sure it is the second biggest town in the whole country in the TB. And one of the reasons behind that is asbestos. And the asbestos, instead, I think it is more than a location, it is universities coming on board. I am going to buy a test, buy a test market. You can get 350 rand. The test market is the institutions. But the government does it to ensure that the asbestos is present. The arthritis, the rheumatoid, the TB. I think it is treatment for a year. Two years later, you go back, you get treatment. And I believe in asbestos. When you are in the department, you prioritize asbestos. People are going to buy everything in the TB. And goes...
Thank you.
Greetings, honourable Chair, and greetings to fellow South Africans. My name is Mandy Satani. I am a committee member in Ward Eight in Zulete. I am also a community leader. I am very happy to see honourable Sufai in this committee. I hope that things will get better. I also want to say to you, Chair, that I support the bill 100%. My other concern is that we have companies that they come here and build houses. But when they leave, the situation is the same. The houses are not in good condition. There are cracks, and the houses need some renovations. My other concern, honourable Chair, is the issue of asbestos. We came here in these townships in 1950, and these houses were built on asbestos. And the issue of TB is very rife in Zulete. People are dying because of this asbestos. And also, Chair, we want also government to come on board and assist. Because we do have universities that come and assist on the issues of TBs and so on. And people, this treatment of TB doesn't last. Because after two years, you are back on treatment. We want to make sure that we do away with asbestos. I thank you, Chair. Greetings, honourable Chair. My name is Nombelung Mbemnyama. I am coming from Ward 14. I am also a committee member there in Kayamnandi. I am so happy, Chair, that you are here with your members. Because the municipality there in Stellenbosch is manipulating our people. So we hope that this bill will be fast-acted so that we can get the necessary assistance that we need. I thank you.
Thank you very much. As we get to the next speaker, can I hear your voices? Please reduce your voices. We have agreed that anyone who wants to speak must go outside, and then they will come back later. Please, proceed, ma'am. Nobala, the town is called Mange. The town is called Mange.
Mange, one?
Yeah, Mange.
Mange, Mange. I think Mange. I think Mange is a good place. They support Mange. But the full is in the toilet. Asbestos in the toilets. Number three, informal settlement. I think it is registered. But if human settlement can make the point, it is not registered. But if basic services so long must be given, I am not sure. I think it is beneficial. It is beneficial. It is a good place. I am not sure if it is. Yes, five, the database. The database, I think consistent. I think consistent and quite common. It manipulates the database of human settlement. And to make the point, it brings about systems as irrelevant in terms of to keep the database. Because it is manipulated as a list. That is, if it is not capable of doing that, I am not sure.
Nobala manipulated the process. He raised the problems. He started by buying my face on second in the bill, but he then raised the problems. Please don't do that. As I said, if you have problems with the issues of houses, any services that government, whether municipality and other things, please go and register them there. We want you to be specific on the bill, please. Because I will now be said to be not fair to others. Because others, they are going there to register. Somebody smuggles his issues through that is speaking about the bill.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Nelly Swasi-Jagi. I am coming from Drakenstein. I am a secretary of Ward Nine. Chair, I stand here to support the bill. And I want to also say that out of five points, there are two points that have been talked to. Firstly, the issue of asbestos has been mentioned. And the issue of toilets has been mentioned. And then, Chair, I thought that government by now would have come with a proper response on the following issues that I have mentioned. And also, there in Begweni, there is an informal settlement called Zulete. I want to say that even if those houses are not registered formally, but they must get the basic necessary services. Also, the issue of beneficiaries. You find out that if a parent who was an owner of a house dies, their children are left destitute. And lastly, there is an issue of a database that is not consistent and is often manipulated. Therefore, I ask government to keep up with the database system. I thank you.
Next. Mama, the town is called Mange. Listen, things that you are speaking to now, please help us to help our mom. Because she is tired. Because the town is called Mange. Please, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Matapang Pomane. I am coming from Ward 16 in Zulete. I support the bill and its contents. I stay in informal settlements that are leaking when it is raining. And it is even difficult to walk around. I wish that... I wish that when the bill is enacted to law, it must have success. I also want to put to you, to Chair, that we are voters. Therefore, voters want every promises that are made to be fulfilled. There's also an issue of my child who was stabbed in 2014 by a particular gentleman from Lisutu. And the guy was arrested and released afterwards and he vanished. And as a parent, I feel so sad because there is no follow-up until today. I thank you.
First of all, I'd like to appreciate my being here. My name is Kamalito Simon.
Can I request? Sorry, sorry, but... The lady with the red and white dress, you are making noise, please. Yeah, please, I'm requesting that let's listen to one another.
So, as I was saying, my name is Kamalito Simon. I'm from Drakenstein, doing grade eleven under the organization called Tameko Eco Club, which is an NGO to our community. So, I heard everyone talking about the bill, disputing the bill and agreeing with the bill. Yet, I'm here, I'm here actually saying that, yes, I do support the bill, but yet it's actually inadequate because none of everything that our people or from, our people from political parties with high positions are doing what we actually asked for. I mean, what's the point of voting yet you're doing the opposite? I'm a learner and I came here to state everything that actually is affecting me. I wake up every morning to go to school. My good chap person, this bill consists of, consists of to ensure adequate protection of housing consumers and effective regulation of the home building industry. You also stated that you're actually here to strengthen the protection of housing consumers. Which consumers are you actually talking about? Because here we have in Begweni, let me say that, in Begweni we have unfinished or undone houses. And yet, people from squad camps are actually still waiting for the houses. They're actually waiting for their own houses, which they actually applied them long time ago. And they're still waiting. Yet, what's happening in Begweni? They take people from Sarun, all our places and leave those people. What, I mean, you also...
When you want to go, when? When you want, the city is registered.
Yes, I'm actually...
The city is registered, Baba. When you want to go, when? Please, talk to the bill. Problems, you take. Go and register them there at the table.
Okay, my good chap person, let me talk about the bill. I would say that everything that is said on this bill may be, please, be fulfilled. And what I would last to ask is that, please, and I'm pleading you, bow before you, stop the hypocrisy and all the propagandas that you're using against our parents, promising them empty promises. And yet, you're here telling about the bill and nothing of this bill is done. I thank you for that.
It's just, I just had people clapping hands. I didn't hear the last part of the words. Because I'm the one who's writing the notes. This bill, if you were here in the beginning, you would understand that we said the department and the NHBRC, which is a regulatory board, they've, as they were trying to implement the act, there is an act in place, they've realized that they have to strengthen the protection of the beneficiaries. And the bill tried to tighten up areas where we have observed their loopholes. That's why we have problems. So, please stick to the bill. We want your input on the bill so that as we pass this bill, it must register your aspiration and your wishes. We are not going to add your problems on the bill, please. Ma.
Good afternoon to you all. My name is Aby Bakir. I'm standing here and I'm in support of the bill. The bill will work, I believe so, but monitoring and evaluation should take place because otherwise, then it will be a futile exercise for us sitting here and other places if there's not going to be monitoring and evaluation. My question is also, how does the bill accommodate farm dwellers? Because I'm doing voluntary work among farm workers. And the reason why I'm asking that is that we are sitting with farm workers, farm dwellers, and it's very difficult on the farms. I want to go back to, somebody mentioned this of inspectors. Now, it is so that in Drakenstein, where I'm coming from, there is a housing project being spearheaded by the province. And every time, that housing project is on the ice because there's a problem with the builder and the subcontractors. Now, we must also look at that because inspectors, the role that some of the inspectors are playing, they are being corrupted by these big oaks. And then, the quality of the houses, the cracks and all that, that comes to the fore. And there's nothing that can be done about that. So, luckily, the bill will cover that. On 2.11.1, it speaks of transformative human settlements, developmental problems. And programs, I mean. So, transformation, like back to the farms, like this particular farm, where land was given to the farm dwellers by the local municipality and the district. But when the other dispensation took over, that was the scrap from the table. And the municipality now is saying that they are going to build, or rather, they are going to make a cemetery there. And these people are still out there. They want their houses to be built there. So, they actually asked this committee to take their step forward. I think they submitted something there so that instead of making a graveyard there by the municipality for them to have their houses, that is in Drakenstein municipality, never drift. Then, there's some of the emerging home builders, data access and protection. Like I've said previously, that is a good step, a step in the right direction. Because in the past, it was the big oaks, those who have money, the affluent oaks, those oaks, they got the contracts for building the houses. And the small ones, the small builders, subcontractors, there was almost nothing for them. So, yes, the bill is also addressing that in terms of economic transformation. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Molyen. We want to register. 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 Until now. We want to register. 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 It's bill.
Greetings, Chair, and greetings to fellow South Africans. My name is Kumbul Zombala. I'm coming from Zolani in Ashton. I want to say thanks to the committee for bringing the bill to us. I feel so grateful and I can see the light at the end of the tunnel. In Zolani, we have one room, houses that we stay on, and they are built on Asbestos. And we want to do away with that system. And also, lastly, actually, as the youth, we want to benefit when the bill is enacted into law and when they start to build houses. I thank you.
Thank you very much. The last ten. One, two, three, four, five, red cap. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Red cap, yes. The lady is number six. Um... Huh? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Ten. You don't have a check. Oh, okay. Number ten. Well, you choose yourself, Moos. I'm not appointed. Yeah? Number ten is that gentleman, yes. We are not going to talk about problems. Problems, as ifunyama problems. Sir Van, we're talking about the bill. If you want, you have problems, please go and register because we are closing even there. Go and register the problem before we close. No, call a pan, Baba. We'll see if we still have time. Call a pan, we'll see. Three minutes. Ma.
How do you first? Come, my Scott. Good day, all the parliament leaders and all the community. My name is Yvonne Haroldine. I'm a week old. I'm a year old. I'm from the municipality of Wuster. The purpose of coming here is is because I want to sit in a new office. And here the memorandum, when here the memorandum is, the purpose of the memorandum is where you point to me, I hear one word, but that's one word that comes in here. And then, I ask you, my friend, if you could please let me see Wuster, what is really in Wuster. Our project, what I want to talk about now, what is good and bad is, I want you to see Wuster on the ground. The word that I'm asking is for parliament leaders. Parliament leaders who come to here. Because here is the floor. Here are the people who have to go to the houses. We have to go out where the projects are and all types of projects we have to do. And the people, I'm embarrassed, I know the problem, but my point is, is the word that I want to hear, I'm looking at one, four, I want to that is related with the war bonds. No? And what is expected can be developed program. In my view, it's not a program that develops. The first program that develops is after eight years. Actually, it's not a program here. On the scale that develops. What is the purpose of the work? That the trend is not established, that it is provided for the people, for the citizens. And then, I want to ask you to clarify what is the skill between the citizens and the purpose of giving the law? Do the people understand the hierarchy? And this is my first understanding that I see this. And I hope, I'm with you on this. But here the ball is a secret device that is not known. I have already done it. And I want you to look at it. It is important. The parliament leaders, the floor. The people are established in the floor. And the parliament leaders, what they do. If it is, that's why I'm going to ask. Because here is the ministers who decide what the purpose of the parliament leaders is. And that is the nadeal the parliament leaders by all municipalities, right over all provinces, not only in Wuster. It's busy to be honest, my friend. As Daniel is saying, it is important. Where is this?
Thank you very much.
My name is Yvonne Haroldine. I'm in Ward 11 in the Breda Valley of Wuster. I represent the municipality of Wuster. I just want to say that I thank you for this opportunity and that I support the bill. I do. But I want you to overview Wuster specifically. I want you to zoom in and look at Wuster. The reason why I'm asking you very nicely and politely to do so is because of the ward members and our duty and our role within this bill. We are supposed, if I talk about point one, point four, there should be funds for development programs. So, what is the reason for this bill and point one, point four if there are no funds or programs being developed in the last eight years? Secondly, I just want to say, we as ward members, not only in Wuster, but everywhere, it is expected of us to go to people's homes and to enforce this bill, to do inspections, to assist them. But the people, not only us, everywhere, do not understand the difference between input on this bill and housing, the problems with housing. If you can please explain to them the difference between the two, then it will make it easier for us. People don't understand. Myself, it's the first time I see this on paper. So, it's difficult for me. The ministers decided what our role and purpose will be within this bill. It influences all of us. Please assist us. Thank you for the opportunity.
Number two.
Thank you very much, Chepersin. Mine will be very short. I'm Suen Dongyeni from Zolani, the council there, actually. I will, mine will focus on chapter five when it comes to financial matters. Section five, section thirty-five, speaking about the Home Waranty Fund, where it states that the purpose of the payments of claims submitted by the house consumer. Then, I will go to section forty-two, which is speaking about claims. It stipulates very clear what a consumer is supposed to do. But what is not there is the fact that where is the regulator council is sitting? Because that's where people don't know where to submit these claims because that's the problem here. Another thing that I think should be added in this bill is the fact that it should include houses, as the previous speakers have just alluded on that. It should include houses that were built previously, before the bill was amended because you stipulated that the bill was amended three times. So, it's clear that it's been coming, that people are roaming around, not knowing where to go. That's why I'm saying mine would be very short. But to add, to add the fact that we should include those previous contractors to account here because we don't know where they are and we need to make them account because those houses are still cracking there. We still have... because those houses are still cracking there, we still have apostles there, we still have hostels that are staying, a lot of people. Thank you very much, Chepperson.
Ik ben Jan Slinger, van Big Five in McGregor. Ik vind het mooi in McGregor, ik kon eens in die bol bij je, honderd procent. Ik is bij daarvoor, maar het probleem maar hier misje, op McGregor leeggrond. En daar is twee honderd en dertien mensen, wat er heel aan ziek doet in die vaaglijst voor beheising. Waarom kan daar niet gebouwd worden bij grond niet? Daar was het zeggen, wie daar gaan gebouwd worden, en die mensen komen aan ziek doen voor beheising. Maar daar gezegd, daar mag niet meer gebouwd worden. Ik wil niet, niet waarom kan daar niet gebouwd worden voor die mensen niet? Maar al bij twee honderd en dertien aan ziek wat er leest, en daar nog waar je meer mensen wat in die vaaglijst is. Daar is het mensen wat dan meer als vijftien jaar in die vaaglijst is, wat niet kan huisje creen niet. Al liggen huisje voor kinders onder achttien, onder vijftien. Maar voor andere mensen, voor zestig mensen wat getrood is, kan je huisje creen niet. Ik bedoel niet waarom niet maar, kan je huisje creen niet.
My name is Jan Slinger and I'm from McGregor. I support the bill, but I have one problem. There's open land identified in McGregor. Currently, there are two hundred and people on the waiting list that applied for homes. Why can that open land that has been identified, thank you colleague, not be built on? And another thing I want to know, why is there not homes for people over sixty? Why do we not have homes? There's homes for young people, but not for people with children and older people than sixty. Thank you.
In teeter in de opa, the purpose of the register contemplated in subsection one is to facilitate first the identification of enrollment homes, second informing housing consumers thereof. This is the last bit, Moos. It is the inspection of enrollment homes, oh sorry, it is cost-effective procurement process in relation to the building of homes, the inspection of enrollment of homes, second. It, the register referred to in subsection one again, must be accessible to the public and subject to promotion of access to information, ik laak acta two thousand, let it down. Must reflect on the geographical location of every enrolled home. And there were two song centers that were created, in the entire community of South Africa. In those two song centers, zinkozen best sonder, so yes. Dit is aardenso talapansie, yachincho from the housing department into human settlement for the tunan. In de etenbaan, die daar zijn keer goed suka, piu nee katu, disla kanan. Dit is South African, humsabawet. And it must reflect, oh, op de komaan in to position, that can relate to Brede en Bata issues. Malungwa, al en toe boei teeter, de geographical location, if violation of the bill is in effect, it must bala okoin transting. Because the housing project that in back to con twenty seventeen, it was called the Begweni backyard as dwellers. Change without our consultation, violating the very principle that guide us and this government, which is about to fail. You must consult us, without us, you are nothing, we know that.
Greetings Chair, my name is Mangendevu from Begweni. I am a ward nine committee member and I'm also coming from Mgoati Glen. And I want to say that all protocol observed. Chair, I wouldn't say that I support, no, I reject the bill. Because there are some issues that are close to my heart that I want to speak to. Firstly, in the bill, it says that it was first amended in nineteen ninety-nine and it has been amended three times. And as people, we were facing difficulties in terms of the contents that are contained here. And I also want to draw your attention to chapter five, where there are certain clauses that must be looked at. Furthermore, Chair, this bill, when it's enacted into law, it must be closer to the people because where we live in places like Begweni, we are suffering. Therefore, we want things that are closer to the people to be implemented. Furthermore, during the President Zuma years, we used to have two song centers that were closer to the people and that assisted us a great deal. Furthermore, this department was changed from housing to human settlements. Therefore, we want the bill to talk to that issue. And also, there were projects that were changed in Begweni and we also want everything to be closer to the people. I thank you.
I wish Ugo Tiba Ugo Tiba can reflect, I hope police station, but if you get police station, tell me something, 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 what I'm saying is that during the process of President Zuma, there were two song centers built to bring close inkozen, services to the people. So I want to good, the human settlement be inclusive, so that landing appelli is to be, no no no.
As it was mentioned, Chair, that during the President Zuma years, the two song centers were closer to the people. Therefore, the Department of Human Settlements, its services must be closer to the people. Thank you.
Because notice on, kuwa bandu, Chair, ababa foto, ugu zo keela. So abakwazi, inaiba, indaau, leba talakuyo, abaini kwanga, oksem tetwin. Ibinga, keklom teeto, Chair, ingonge zwa, indo eti, kautewa talaklo ndau. Di teeta ke, Chair, plotte service wayo, antete ngomshaba, ogunge nwekuonji. Itige, Chair, uba, besino, kaulesi se loa, lom teeto, uti, kautewa talaklo ndau, ukalesu, kuule nwekuwe. Ogokbe la, Chair, indi ma ye PHP housing, ibige ya kachaze loa, kakulu, kuputo shelifa, Chair, project neyo. Esine minweno, yenduba, lom teeto, Chair, unga, ipushela, inoba, ibuye, because, Chair, ibiluneto, PHP kakulu kuti, bashala. Chair, ma di vale geliti, dingamo shanga keshalako, Chair, ma di vale geliti, Chair, kumiteto, ete ya bekuwa, kundo eti benene, social housing, Chair, sinestrela kakulu, inobanga ba, kunoma spala, abanga zwo yanga, i social housing. Makube akunteeto, o, oke ninisai, inoba, mazibe ko na, Chair, ogonzel, baba bandu, ba, ba pe yangenla, ba kwazi, oganyebana machal, ba kwazi, ukokele wa nabu, banga kwazuzu kele, bangene kweza, social housing, ba kwazi, xala, Chair, ngosimxala ngapangir, nyabule.
Alright. Thank you very much, Honorable Chepperson. Thank you very much, Honorable Chepperson. For the record, I support the bill. My name is Moses Mangani, I'm coming from Zwale Temba. I am also a councillor, I'm wearing two hats, one hat as a councillor and the one as representing human informal settlements. We want to thank the committee for coming here because we want to add, so that certain amendments can be effected. We want the municipality also to give services to the people. And another issue, the issue of title deeds. For instance, if you stay in a service plot, that service plot must be converted to a house. Also, the issue of PHP has been mentioned. And we want that PHP to be brought back because it helped us a lot. And also, the issue in social housing, we do have those people that are in debt. But we want also those people to be helped so that they can access social housing. I thank you.
Detroit Emma, give one as a person that is an activist, especially when it comes to women that are living in farms or farm dwellers. I do support the bill. And Chair, one of the things that I would love to emphasize on regarding the support of the bill, I understand that this department, it's one of the fortunate departments that can expropriate without compensation. And one of the issues then, I really find it difficult. Our people are seriously having issues when it comes to getting houses in this province. I am sorry to kind of deviate, but I would love this bill to really give most of the municipalities accountability. This municipality, especially the provincial government of the Western Cape, reckons that it's the only country on its own, it's independent. It must learn to respect our constitution and our legislation. One of the things that we are looking at, because they always claim, English is gone at the moment, a clean service, a clean audit. For me, clean audit, it's no service delivery at all. In this province, there is no service deliver. Not because our national government is doing nothing, but there are individuals that are hierarchy here. I would love to emphasize the other point that is happening. Municipalities in this province, let them take full responsibility, not desert people. They are trembling and stamping on our people's rights. Because they still have the money, they have the access. Then how do we put this on the forefront to see emancipation for black people? We are not yet emancipated and we are not yet free in this province. I have touched on the dispensation. I have touched on, yes. Now, in addition, on one point four. Chair, tekoopa operation kaulesa. Let it come by fire, by force. Come twenty twenty-four, because this government at the moment is telling itself that our people are tired because we are not servicing them. No, let it be implemented. No more lip service, but action, Kelleboch.
Adla adla, ga ipathles a bestoes, anekreks, Afunu kalakufoundish. En new, kwen dandi kekabiko noba, koto angoko, ndi, lego sixties. Adla adla, ga banja kwe tu. Eh, adla adla kabanakue tu. Ah, 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 izo ndosu xalabantu. Kanikenga neken omaspaala kui title didi. Akano kwazi uni kesa ni title didi. Ebantwi li, enga kalanga azende, okuchayzing. Uni kesa ikreko, elinge namandla. Elinga zukwazi nokala nguplasteranoksin. Eh, owesbiini ma mamata tu, ndatu nje. Ndiya kela kuba kutetweni zing. Si, si, sina bantu batxala kuyu che. Sina bantu abaperelaisa bantuana, abukulekaayo. Ekutukwa kuchapa ama joto mbeni, sibale etina, sbashia ngapagati. Sashia kabanu anabesicho. Anina kienza nale nyeba yo iti. Nitibare omaspaala, nitate. Aba bantu bakuba ze kleyo paku te ama joto mbene. Ni bokele at least. If one hundred percent wezinto. Nitate o ten percent, ninika banbaku ba ze kleyo. Ntingavu yakaku. Eh, ndibantu akabila mamam, engosi. Indesize siyenza betunani, kuba lakasiakuta. Kuba kutuka ufsika aba nyabantu. Iben gatiyongindiza kaulesa, engosi.
Eh, greetings to the committee. Eh, my name is Noctula Wana from Begweni. I am a councillor in ward 6. Eh, I stand here to support the bill. And I also want to put you, Chair, that if I make a mistake in my presentation, please forgive me. I want to talk to the issue of housing. There in Begweni we have houses that were built on asbestos and they are in a very bad condition. Furthermore, before the government issues title deeds, they must make sure that they build up proper houses. And then there is an issue of people who are on wheelchairs and others who are living with disability. Eh, sometimes we experience situations whereby there are fires that are erupting there. And we don't get any assistance eh for those people. And as a result, we ask the municipality to build eh them proper houses eh for those people who live with such disabilities. I thank you.
Eh, ma kala ndibulisa kuba parti basi parliament. Tiza obulela nelituba ndilfumenayo. Nale ngatiso ndilfumana yo namshaji. Kui ngatiso ye ez ngabileyo. Titi namge ma ndilthateli tuba ndilsebenzis. Mnagendu ngukolali kedi so payi titorensi. Kawa 2. Anandi ninsen ndisa itetongoba banyasebe stetiri. Nendo ndisa iteta sendi sabiti. Kanti sa malju highlighta ndiye zimengi. Payi titorensi la informal, informal settlement. Sina majoto mbene akaliswe kui service plots. Apo maspaala ela, ate ra no kwazi kuakasi ukusu. Go ukula majoto mbana kui service plots. Ndiya itanda indwa ka PHP. Goba u PHP ukuyo kwazi kwenza ukshenga shengis. Utehalo omaspaala sisenza imbalalwanda. Kunsimba ezze imbalalwanda na ya ke ebantwi. Go ndisa ukela na ni ba parti. Ukulomtetu nubegileyo. Ma ubekona umtetu, ozau la ulomaspaala. Anga biyeyato, omaspaala yotu lakalu se bantu. Na go ndi mea apa se ibiti nga bashala basas. Sezo nasenza banban, banabiko inform. Kui ndowe yonge tibene no government. Tiza opinda genondi tikandu kibedes and ya payi sentiri u housing. Yan kaga genye senti. Indoba nditindu, ndinutata bantuana. Kusuo kwenye na bantuana bamenzini. Mnandishiwengereba. And ya kwa lomtetu usupa. Because na ulomtetu nubegileyo we pil. Diya wamkele kuba tabile pil. Ye yo leza uchincha la tatapisi. Goba la tatapisi kachari swa rohwa ngirinikaya xa. Ina kachari swa ngorso bu housing asebenza. Goba lugu housing, unye temse kondisi. Apati ya na eh, kauza ngenezzi nufunu kubeti seki. Kauza ngenezzi nufunu kubengi umdo olpe. Kauza ngenezzi nufunu kubengi umdo napoti yes. Pateso singa zemseki. Kusuo kungena bantuana, kwezo zidi. Nufuwa kengi. Lukulomtetu koyo ma kwe umtetu ozau sebenza. Ukwe polisi ya bantuaba talaa, engosi.
Eh, greetings to the portfolio committee. My name is Kalani Tekiso from Totorens. Eh, I want to also to mention that I've also made a submission to the officials. And eh, I want to also to speak on the issue of informal settlements that are built on service plots. And there were quite many correspondence with the municipality, but the municipality has not responded to our concerns. And we don't als, we, we also don't want the municipality to work alone because the municipality is not accountable. So we want an oversight on the side of the government. Eh, my other last concern, Chair, is the issue that when they allocate these houses, they only cater for the young or for the youth. Therefore, we want this bill to aid to also come with a policy that will also cater for the elderly people. I thank you.
Goye midag almo. Ek is Dulcebel. My name is Dulcebel Winegod. I'm from Montecue. Ek anAfricans pran. Ek staan vamara in a gray area. Ek kan maklik se, ek ga ni bolo. Ga ni, ek ga nit good keer. And then say okunis, sahda asim. Ek keer it okni good ni. Di reda hi for is, omdat. Ons lezi so, wannu is di unwets onwerb. Wannu he t it al inhi, 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 inhi ganggekom. And he sit us nog. And us it us mit meer probleme. Us it nog mit meer probleme. And he miti, di, 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 di bolo mit nog amen, of, of, mit nog na vori, vori dag komu, it mit good keer wot. And di reda hukumuk so se is. Eh, us it must, ek, ek is oku old school. And ek lewe, os lewe nog nog. And nog were os mense praat van di jong mense krei se, enhi old mense krei ni meri. Was di bolo, gedang os al nog altik. Os al nog, os saleris doit gewisse om nog, heidi dangi antva os te brang. And nog mit os nog vohin kokke. And nog mit os, os weet is, os, os it is eh opledinga hat where di wets onwerb, onwerb ni. And he mit os om nog angepasset om di bolo te amen. Of di bolo good keer. Di taiti, as os praat di vani, vani tait wat it, wat it ontstani, dan zal it nog, as os it taiti begint it, and zal os nog better hat it. Van da was so tait gewis wat os gepraat it, wat eh, wat di government gepraat it, that os eh 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 integre. And as os taiti stellung, ingene met, om te integre, then zal da better behisim, and mense zal vaardega hat it. Because as hale muss geintegreerit, then zal hale tisindhi hers gebleed. And hale zal better e lewe hat it. And tuwa taiti doit gemacht nog is, that is for the third keer wat hale probeer om di bolo eh, te eh, 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 mend of, eh, 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 dop, or whatever. My di concern is is so. As os sing, what di bolo nog vohos weis dikling vamai na. Alas is honki donki. Alas gaat goed. And os kan i se, alas gaat goed di. Os kan iti se ni. And in minute vamai se, ek moet di bolo amfaire. Of ek moet nikti anhi bolo praat it, then it vaite like hale we, my mense rechte. Kei wat i se is so. He, di doo van heidi wets onwerb. Di doo van heidi, is, is, is skermung van his, behisim geberfabriktis. And he sit os nog mit overpopulate eh eh weska. Van di weska is vamo, is, is, is a problem. Di weska is a problem. Van ons kli. Os mense krei ni meri. Van is cheap labor. Wat plasgevindit om mense van ooral te brang. Om ons mense ekte so. Vanam os eh, ons mense en, alas wat gebier.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So di bolo is mai, is a gray area, os klama.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of Parliament. My name is Dulcebel Winegod. I'm from Montecue. I will address you Africans, if I may. I'm in a gray area here. I want to approve this bill. I see the value. But I also do not want to approve this bill. I have read. When I read this, you have stated and said it's, the onset was already in 2000. But now, we have more problems than from the beginning. You say this bill must be amended. But I'm sorry to say, I'm old school. What about us elderly? We all, that we see is that young people get homes. We are not included. We are 60 years and old, and I'm old. Did you hope that we would have died by now? Is that why we are not included? If we talk about when you started this, it would have been far better if government integrated this then, right from the beginning. We would have lived then amongst the haves, those who have it. I cannot say that everything is hunky dory because it is not. And please don't tell me I can't speak about housing because then you are violating my human right. We should protect our human rights. The last thing I want to say is the Western Cape is overpopulated. People are coming in from everywhere, cheap labor. Here we, we are. We have to deal with it. We don't have work. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Goye midag, and all the Parliament's leaders. Um, ya tse ek will paraat we di, di bolo. Te wego te, wil ek neet anraak. Van i vorare speaker, zee het nog al redelijk angeraak. Um, ek will paraat we di registration process. The registration process, zee ek beki dega gan nerenz. And here di bolo is da, a timeframe angekoppel. Van re, eh, van registration process by di municipalite te fatte lang. And dit laa ons as consumers baita kan om da ni te handa volanshi di acte. Van dit is wat os hi doen vamadag. Os kom hi as a gemeenschap, as South Africa, kom is be meka om hi di bolo te amen. Ma ashi registration process te lang gaan by a municipalite, gaan ek onweter bou. Di brood gaan op, alle kostes gaan op. Wani er di municipalite, ienda. Di registration si afhandel van i bolo process. Dan het ek lang al kla, ti, ti struktiere gebou. So ek will gar far, that here di committee mit notice that nerenz is here timeframe angekoppeling. As ek gaan kek bei blad 15. Um, 625 is 4. The registration of a home builder or developer is valid for a period prescribed by the council. Question ma, who is the council? Is the council the municipalite? Or who is the council? So, dami di men, di, di, di bolo mit da, meespecifiek wies. Sit da inhi bolo that ek kan se wetgeving se so. 14 da, 7 da, 11 da. Om baita las da. Di, di, bolo inspector kom dan, that is alles related op registration. Damit di ears, he mit erst foundation grave, stop. Inspector kom uit. Ai kom, i wali uit. Da na, mit si konkret gooi, stop. I wali uit. And da na bou si tot dakworte, stop. So is alles process. But di timeframe, di bolo mit vole timeframe geer om te se, wannu 7 da, wannu 4 da. Dan wil ek i folone anraak se. Um, chapter 18. Financial matters. Um, ya di i ndamikide ayakla angera. Ek will fara van i home warranty van. Da was, laas ya was da, a flat under Rafirsoni End. Allai RDP houses was de flat. Di community het gereis na wie to kan hale gaan for assistance. Now fara ek, ek fara van da van di bolo. Wie claim for home warranty as a municipal or as a homeowner? And I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, my name is Ivor Mentur and I'm from Rafir Sonderend. Good afternoon again, all Members of Parliament and public. I want to say only two things that previous speakers did not address. The first one is the legislation process. Nowhere is there a time limit to the registration process. If we do it at the municipalities, I just want to bring it under your attention, it takes too long. We have come here today as citizens of South Africa to voice our concerns regarding this bill. When the municipality completed the registration, then I have already started building because it just takes too long. Registration at the council, do I register there? Where do I? The building inspector, he comes along. And then I want to know who are they in this bill? Who are the people where I should register? I want an insert in the bill that states where I must, that my time limit. Is it now seven days or 14 days? How long do I have? Or should I take to get my registration or my processes in process, eh, in place? I know this is a process. I do know it takes time. The building inspector comes to my site. Then I throw the foundation, then I stop. The building inspector comes. I build the walls, I stop. The building inspector comes. I have to wait. Now the roof, I stop. The building inspector came. There should be a timeframe to this. I cannot wait. Then chapter 18, financial matters, that has been addressed by something, um, some speaker previously, so I will not go back there. All I want to say lastly is that last year, RDP homes flooded in my environment. Where should these people go? Who claims that warranty? The homeowner or the municipality? Who now supplies the warranty? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those RDP houses that you are mentioning that have flooded, go and register them there. Where's the guy? Register them there, where are they? Um, who was responsible? There are a lot of people who are saying they want, still want to speak. Um, I don't want you to say parliament was here and declare, deny us the opportunity to speak. There were people, there are people who want to speak. I'm don't want you because this process is a, it's, it's a process of making legislation. If those that have not given chance to speak, if they take us to court as parliament, we are, we have to go back to the system to do this real, to start afresh. So you have to be patient with us. I'm saying there are hands that still want to speak. I'm going to give them chance, but we are agreeing this is the last round. And please don't bring the problems. Talk to the legislation. One, for one, from, who wanted, there was a hand here. Ah, you have spoken. One, ah, one, one, but, two, three, four, five, and six. These are the last. seven, seven bab. These are the last hands. I've not deny anybody an opportunity to speak. Agreed? Thank you. Number one? Number one, start.
My name is Charles Erodeen Boysen on the Durens. Ik steem samen met die bol. Ik weyerie. Maar ik wil net goed zeggen zoals iet Mister Cheege zegt het al klaar. Mijn naam is Charles Erodeen Boysen van de Durens, weg drie. Maar ik wil net zeggen ik steem samen met die bol, ik het hier probleem aan mieni. Dit is een paar klein goedes wat ik wil lighten. Kijk, oos het, oos het, oos nabaan toe elderly people wat daar blij in de Durens, ou mensen. Alle werkje. Alle blij in de plek wat hulle noemen is gaaike. Daas de, dis eible mensen wat daar blij aan het bijte toilette. Yes. Zo is ik gesaid het van tevoren, daas, daas een plek wat hulle noemen een gaaike. Daas mensen wat in wheelchairs loop, blinde mensen wat daar blij. Dat is elderly people die, die toilette is gebouw bijte. Nou, daar is persoon wat in de rijstoel sit. Daas wistuppe, daar is persoon kan die af rij met de, met de rijstoel. Die toilette is bijte, bij van hulle was als ik een verkracht al voorien. Daas voorien is ik een goedte. Nou, wat oos wil gefraad het, kan hulle niet in die toilette nabij bouwtien die hij is nie. Twee ernst, RDP houses wat government voor die mensen gierd van 2016 af, die hij zeet cracks. Cracks, 2016 houses was built in the Durens. They always use asla. Asla give us a problem. The cracks in those houses, the wind come in. Some houses just falling apart. Sorry, jammer. Derdens, kwaes dat daar hij ze wat gebouw is 2016? Oos blij, mensen blij pe plaas waar boeren nie, wil als die meer is 10, 20 jaar op pe plaas is, dan moet die, die plaasboer voor die persoon een hij is bouw. Nou, wat die boeren doen in de Durens met oos municipaliteit officieels, halle verkoopt die hij ze voor 65.000. Ek Charles Erodeen Boysen zeg soe. Halle verkoopt die hij ze voor 65.000. Als je kan kijk, dat is 15 hij ze in één straat aan jou rechter kan, 15 hij ze naar jou linker kan. Daar blij, als ik een re plaas mensen, letzij aantal van jongse mensen blij en 30 hij ze. Dan ga ik weer naar de andere kant zoals, zoals een pomleen niet toe. Daar blij, Jan van Ribiek, 66 mensen. Mensen wat hij ze ge, ge applied, halle krijn die hij ze nie. Dan kom ons weer probleem, ik denk. Langeberg, Langeberg Streek, Esten, Montiquieu, alai plekke. Yo, ouders doen aansook voor een hij. Daas die RDP mag gelukkig, die persoonen wat die hij is moet krijgen is dood. Die hij is 16 jaar, 18 jaar oud, na 19 jaar oud. Nou moet je de hij is krijgen. Dan wordt afweer gesaid, dit is nie erg posies nie. Nou, hoe wordt gebeurd met zikke hij ze? Maar die hij ze wordt verkoopt. 2016 hij ze, daar is die ceiling nie. Daar is die, een, een, een krachtplak, zie me vrouw? Daas naxi.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. And the last thing, um, chair, sorry, sorry. The last thing, the last thing, I asking you, I plead to parliament. Go oversight the Durens. Go oversight the Durens because it's not right what happening there. And do not the Durens, go all these, all these places, you must go oversight.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Charles Boysen from the Durens Ward Three. I do approve the bol, I, I, I actually think it's a good thing. I just want to say a few things. There's old people living there, elderly people. They live in a place called Haiki. Those people, some of them are in wheelchairs. They live on a places, houses with high stoops, verandas, no steps. Can they not build some of their outside toilets closer to the homes at least? Especially those people in wheelchairs. There are people that are blind. It's very difficult for them. Then I also want to mention that in, there were 216 homes were built by asla. Those, those homes have cracks in them. They are falling apart. You know, I, Charles Boysen, I can tell you, there's a farm. There people, where people have lived for 20 years and longer. They've been calling that their homes, but they sell these homes for 65.000 rand. That's what I tell you, that's what's happening at the Durens. Furthermore, I just want to say that sometimes our parents apply for a, for a home. Then they die. Then they tell us that the children cannot inherit those homes. It's not theirs to inherit. It's not theirs to have. I want to ask you, what happens to that house? Whose is it now? I want you to come, repeating the part that I said in English, to come to the Durens. Overview what's happening there. Come and see for yourself. Something is not right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Number two, um, can the, the gentleman go and register those houses there? Those houses that you are saying parents have died and children cannot inherit those houses. Go and register them there.
Molwiinie, is ja bulisa chepesini, ne komi diyako. Chepesini, dit lala eti Durens, Alfred Belle. Dit lala kuwa tu, eti Durens. Eti Durensi chepesini, inda we grapes. Inda we export. Exporte iting swapeshaya, chepesini. Keemal es basuwayo. Chepesini, is nen trungwe, eti Durens. Ti nabaan toe abenzale export, asina zindu sitlala, emajyotyo mbene. So, ndiakon, ndiendokbana, genkoku, na la masu atenga, la ma le grapes, as eti Durens. Angotu akwinda weslala kus. Number one, chepesini. Eti Durens, kawa tu, kukona baan toe abenzala, panzi kwe kebul, ka escom. Panzi kwe kebul, ka escom. Ka kuchijyotyo mbepayana, lieni ukali beke ep, embanen niphezulu. Kuvute, kuvute ipali. Number two, chepesini. Ntungwe yetu, eti Durens. Sitlala, sibabini efin. Si shera ipoze yuwan. Si shera iplot, iplot yuwan is sibabini. Ipoze si shera sibabini. Itoilette si shera sibayfo. Loenda ulayo, sa sitlala ek pomlenukala. Umaspala, wase, wasetuta, wasesakuwa tu. Kukus tutenikwaka, wasetuta cruciali, chepesini. Wakala umbani, singe ekko, umbani owafaka go 2019, go 2020, go 2009. Zangukubeno nyaga lombani lo. So, genkoku si funukonda, genkoku, ingabe, imalisga government, is sejonsua olsobu na. Kubalambani zamukujonene nonyaga.
Thank you, bab. Hamba upadi salap.
Ay, sen sagmiti, le te, chepesini, difunane, ek komiti, ilagele, ne jesa.
Why do you come back and talk? Because you tell, you funa people who are speaking on the bol. Ay, madmina.
Funumtu du cheta ge bol kaluku, afane tu es kalak.
Ja, ik support die bol, ja ik support, difuni lungse, yo, genkende, as eti Durens. Ja ik support, chepesini, ka cool, 100%. Skasi funi du, si funa, si funa, yo oversight, genkoku, yes, now.
Thank you, thank you, bab. Thank you, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, cheperson. I'm Alfred Belle from the Durens Ward Two. Greetings to cheperson and the members of parliament. The Durens is an area where they farm with grapes. And the grapes they produce there is being exported. And that means they make lot of money. But we, the people who are working there, are staying in informal settlement. And those countries that we export our grapes to will be very shocked to find out where we are staying. That is us as the workers who are producing these grapes. And furthermore, we used to stay in an area called Egupumleni. But we are removed by the municipality there and we are staying in, two people are sharing, sharing one plot. We are sharing one electricity box. Four people are sharing one toilet. And so this electricity, when it, we were evicted from the area, the municipality came to the area where we are staying whilst we are not there. And it was after we were provided with electricity, that is in 2009. But even before the year elapsed, that electricity was gone. I don't know whether that is the way that you utilize the government funds that this electricity expires just before the year elapsed. And furthermore, there are people who are staying under escom cables, which is very dangerous and risky. When fires erupt from those informal settlements, the fire would fly up to the cables itself, which is a very health hazard. So those are the problems I want to raise. I support the bol, but I emphasize the issue of oversight. Really, the Durens deserves to get some oversight.
Thank you. Another person? Please, we are talking about the bol. Niang stopa kunama, die bol.
Ok, ndibuliside betuna, dinga ya ngaklaesha, funda uvela, ndje klendo ye bol, ndye ikasa. Pati genkoku ni itala, ndinendo, efunu, enfunu iphakamisa. Ndipuma eti Drakenstein, umaspala, eti Drakenstein. Kawa 13. Kuko inda endibonayo, ebo state, ebo state capture, eti Drakenstein. Apo sikapela indokokbana, kukui oki, es, es izakelo, umaspala, phaklanda, ukutwai itala. Ezakiwa, umaspala, for, abandbalanda. Kubizindu, u asla oki zindu, ezinwa one room. Then nau kukwakiwa, iu utingoku ne. But then, inda yenzeka, yo sitesi salchongile kunge, nabashali betu, be la tal. But nau kuko, ubuchomi, ama pulo ama plas. Azo afmani chance, yo zo ufaka, bando ba upa. Of which, lando iro ngongo, ba aba bando, ba ne service, ama plasin. Ba benze, ba rich. But nau u engosi wala ama pulo ama plas, ubase benzaba. Baba kupele zi okini. Of which, it is wrong. Ngogo ibona kuwe tusina, bashali. A unna tumtu ekuwenze rich, iminyaka ek bubomba ke, kwa pela manja wa ke. Ekukuke, ni kwake, funiko, kalaio, okine lokshin. Iti ni indokapo, anina obakuse, labanba ama plas. Ba ke iminyaka ya bo, ama plasin. Bazokuchalo ama plasin es lokshin, yo, ezio okine es lokshin.
Ikama geses, kan wil kas.
Monika Tay Tay. I'm Monika Tay Tay from Drakenstein, Ward 13. I support the bol. But there's something that I want to touch. In the area where you are staying, there's some kind of a state capture by the municipalities. Because people who are staying there are staying in houses which were built by asla, which was one room. But now the municipality has erected some informal structures for the people to stay in. And now whilst that is happening, these informal structures are being taken over by some other people who do not even belong to those one-roomed houses. And they are using some kind of friendship to get access to these informal structures. And furthermore, the farmers who are using our people are also abusing this process. They take their workers who are making them rich on the farms, they put them in these informal structures, which are provided by the municipalities. Which is something that is very, very unfair to those people after sweating to make the farmers rich. And then when they get old, they are being thrown into these informal structures. I want to know, is there no way that you can assist the farmworkers so that they can benefit from where they using their sweat and strength in the farms? That when they get old, they should at least be provided by the farmer who benefited from their strength in their younger years. So those are the issues that I want to raise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is lot of noise. Can we lower our voice? I know that you are tired. I'm tired too. Please, let's lower our voices.
Molwiinie, ik amalam diwupois, ifanya mkuanyani, di suga etulbach, kawa wa di eleven. Di zaupela, ndokokbana, zengoku basin siti, ma siyamkele i bol. I bol, sa yamkele state. Eh, inga gespeet tayo, anikeli apa ngapambi le, wenze ken du, ni chincha chincha, ktebe gataju. Anikeli kani akala, deni chincha chincha, kateka gataju. So, is sa yamkele tinasi siti. I bol, zauba i bol, emveni kokoko okuwa, wonke omtu, oanze iteloso fumanana inju. Afumanen inju. Ngoba, inga ge, bankeelba, kubekoe, ezinwa, inga ge, zingaga. Kuwa baba, balaila inju, azisakiwa inju, zinikuwa, bani abantu. Yio lendo, zinwa inga ge, genkoku. Ya ba i bol, apa ku, emveni okuwa, ndi apalaila inju, ndi fumanen inju. I bol, genkoku, kainjali. Kote, oba isa ti, ibe i bol, kuchincha chincha, kwa apla yo myumtu, inju, ngeno myumtu, yin inga ge le. Kanga, oba, ende banke, badi kuku, misse, ekelenda, yebol. Na lena, yo aplaila inju, ikunye swain duweni. Die a chamdu bukele tif. Wonke, umsans Afrika, uninga gene. Ezinze, zakiwayo, asfani nunge, lasnenganga, bamba, mainzo ngapaja. I bol, ma iti, u aplaila inju, ufumanen inju, engos.
I am Boysen Yane from Tulbach, Ward 11. Yes, I, we will support the bol, but we will have some inputs to say. My request is that when we support the bol, please allow us space to say what we want to say. Because you tell us to support the bol and the bol was amended three times before, but you don't report to us as to what happened, what led to the bol to need to be amended three times. You don't give us. To me, for the bol to be enacted, it will only happen after everybody applied for a house and somebody has been provided with a house. Then to me, that will be, I'll be fine with that. But what is happening now, people apply for houses, they are being approved, but when the delivery time comes, the other people are given those houses. So those are the challenges that we are faced with. Furthermore, what is touching me very so seriously is that I do watch TV and I discovered that South Africa is encountering the same problem. All over South Africa, people apply for houses, they get approved, but when the houses are being delivered, you see, you see new faces. So for me, to be sure that the bol will be enacted, it's only when those mistakes has been rectified. The list should not change. If it's captured this way, it should stay like that until somebody has been delivered a house. Thank you.
Eh, mandibulishe, ti zauti nganga, nenzibazai. En di umtete, kama, tumluwalalifani, di suga stelenboshe, ekayaman, di winda, yasenkani. Ya, ndye ik support i bol, pellele, kand, funukuti lena, i bol, iyo tizi sebenze, ngakasa. Ilande lewe, kulmento, ibeki le, inga ke koyo, umteto, yabequa, unga jongu, uti, abandla, baba follow, umteto, baya u follow, ana or not. Inga ke koyo, kele, isa ubeku umteto, sitikishisana, zupakamise, situ right. Ungenze, ik umteto, wenamtu bukele, yo, genkoku, unarulu, azubabe, kufalo, wamba kanchi, akao, na powa yo lungis. Ubone, zee, lo, omtu, une powa yo lungis, umteto, oka, ye, o nganda, omtu. To, Oka, Nyay, Onanga, Umdu, Ungi, Ande, Umte, To, Ya, Bape, Fana, Wenza, Kange, Ani, Ah, Chong, Inja, Chong, Inja, Lin, Inga, Ke, Koyo, Ke, Le, Eh, Billi, Iya, Otiz, Eh, Nen, Nen, Okuzi, Kulunge, Kase, Kase, Koba, Tandi, Mamene, Di, Ifunda, Was, Stripcha, Ifunu, Sipula, Nengama, Eh, Corruption, Iya, Otiz, Sipule, Eh, Ke, Genko, Kua, Sa, Be, Kuktwie, Magua, Anjo, Galen, Le, Kuchong, Kuti, Inku, Eh, Kuchi, Wayo, Si, Enzika, Galen, Le, Eh, Si, Kuchwe, Nga, Yo, Na, Umze, Ke, Lumning, Chengo, Di, Puma, Kua, Twelfe, Kayaman, Yeah, Parkland, Da, Unti, Kuyas, Stellenbosch, Enganin, Sishtal, Sukha, Pang, Oh, Two Thousand and Six, Na, Namshange, Awka, Di, Kombani, Lenda, Unti, From, Two Thousand and Six, Until Now, Inga, Ke, Koyo, Ke, Genko, Abandu, Ba, Tal, Umbani, Kui, Kui, Pa, Eh, Eh, Lokish, Eh, Zinomba, Wamb, Inda, Mbo, Samba, Pamos, Wama, Chution, Be, Wait, Tu, Uya, Kusumba, Lamba, Kuchisa, Ne, La, Kuli, Mele, Kusongi, Zan, Waba, Uti, Wa, Umamele, Umte, To, Ba, Eh, Eh, Iroongo, Le, Inga, Ke, Kua, Klaus, Itchel, Chution, Be, La, Lumdu, Tu, La, Lamba, Nuzalu, Eh, Ke, 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 Nda, Mbo, Kuchisa, Now, Na, Banba, Wambaya, De, Talo, Kuti, Eh, Nen, Nen, Sing, Eh, Eh, Na, Don, Fluiva, Before, Ntang, Salap, A, Zka, Ni, Penduro, Eh, Ima, Chution, Be, Kona, Nenda, Win, Fana, Sal, Little, Shil, Nga, Kanan, Okuzi, Afumane, Is Service, Abandu, Be, Glonda, Okuzi, Ba, Fu Manai, Zin, Lumze, Koba, Banba, Tigo, Ninety-two, Ba, Be, Kona, Parkla, Kayaman, Asa, Se, Chution, Be, Na, From, Ninety-two, Then, Se, Se, Primary, Gelo, Trash, But, Ba, Se, Se, Chution, Be, Inova, Little, Shil, Kanga, Kanan, Ommele, Umdu, Alsal, Eh, Se, Chution, Be, Ama, Chution, Be, Eh, Kona, Glo, Lokish, Fana, Sal, Little, Shil, Nga, Kanan, Eh, Kono, Okuzi, Ah, De, Afumane, Service, Deliver, Umbani, Inde, Eh, It toilets, Yonki, Do, Engos.
Thank you very much.
I am Titili, Liwalala, from Kayamnadi, Stellenbosch. Greetings to the chairperson and all protocol observed. I support the bill, but for me to be sure that the bill or this legislation will be, will come to finality, there should be some kind of monitoring, those who need to be the implementers of this legislation. Because what happens, the laws are being passed and you see, they are good laws, they are beneficial to the people, but when the implementation come, those who supposed to be implementing do their, their own thing, those who supposed to be monitoring turn a blind eyes to the implementers. So for me, I really wish that there should be some kind of monitoring to the implementers. And it is clear to us that the purpose of this bill is to eradicate corruption, that is a very good, it looks like a good legislation, but there should be some kind of implementation and monitoring. And there should be also a kind of timeframe for those who staying in informal settlement. For how long does one have to stay informal settlement in order for that settlement to get services? Because there are people who are staying in those informal settlement in Kamnandi since nineteen ninety-two, whilst they were still doing primary, but up until now, those people are still staying there without services. And I'm staying in an area called Enganeni, we don't have electricity in that area since two thousand and six. As a result, many people resort to illegal connections and those illegal connections lead to fires. And those fires don't only affect the one who is involved in the illegal connections, also affects other people or innocent people. So I'm happy with the bill, but please, there should be monitoring.
Good afternoon, I greet my parliament, uh, my honorable parliament, with a humble spirit this afternoon. My name is Priscilla, I'm from Montiki, Langaberg, uh, Western Cape. Um, I'm gonna say I support the, the bill and I reject the bill at the same time. I'm gonna give my reasons. Reason number one is, the bill is nice and sweet for those who are staying in the houses, who will understand what is the meaning of the bill. And then, the reason I'm gonna reject the bill is, the, the bill doesn't have a time period, like example, they will say, when will this implemented and when is the end period of the bill? So that is why I say I'm gonna reject it, because it's not so clear for me. The last one is, I'm gonna come on the point of the services. Uh, when it come better, housing, uh, me, as Priscilla, from Mandela Square Settlement, I have a problem with the housing, uh, waiting, uh, waiting list, uh, housing, because the housing list doesn't state, how long are you on the waiting list? And it's also like, there is no time period, so you can be on the waiting list for more than twenty years, but it doesn't show how, for how long are you on the waiting list, because first come, first served. And then the other thing is, I'm sorry to name this, my honorable parliament, but since nineteen ninety-nine, Mandela Square, Esberry, they are still staying in the shacks where there is no electricity, the people are still using the bushes, there is no electricity, we are still fighting for the services for today. So I already, uh, uh, sent my complaints there to the table, but I really like the parliament to take note that the Western Cape, Langaberg Municipality in Montiki, Mandela Square People, only ten people, ten toilets, and three hundred household must share the toilets. So please, hear our cry today, with a humble spirit, I ask you, parliament, hear our cry. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the police, uh, Umte, Nitalu, Netimyake, Ah, Mbana, Yo, Yonke, Eh, Yalbo, Na, El Tu, Ba, Le, Nisipelo, Na, Namshange, La, Eh, Eh, Usta, Kuti, Nizo, Si, Fundisa, Gonkomolu, Na, We, Bill, Encha, Eh, Housing, Was, Kutha, Ileki, Amen, Di, We, Amen, Di, Was, Since nineteen ninety-nine. So, Mina, Eh, Bill, Le, Nangi, Is, Buza, I, Question, Eh, One, Fullmento, Unozan, Eh, Mi, Te, To, I, Pass, Eh, Mi, Te, To, Got, Da, Le, Ni, Bill, Yo, Na, Kunzi, Mukuti, Si, Pass, Is, We. So, Jenga, Kunja, Log, Eh, Nisbuza, Umbuza, Kuti, Abandu, Sinaduna, Eh, Lungelo, Om, Nangi, Na, Di, Lungelo, Lokshuka, From One Province, See, Because of, Ngyase, Benz, Apa, Ifi, Get, Apa, Ngi, Tot, Um, Manai, Indu, Mpa, Disa, De, Indu, Ngifumanai, Kuna, Banbu, Aba, Ni, Minyaka, Kati, Be, Apa, Bengani, Wa, Isin, Do, Like, I, Question, Eh, So, Le, Nengu, La, Pon, Sukha, Kona, Nixia, Abandu, Na, Bami, Artipilo, Ngunayo, Gipinde, Nga, Apa, Nhisu, Kwa, Disa, Um, Kuku, Si, Be, Ba, Tat, Eh, Boba, Ifo, Eh, Mku, Kui, Nen, Nenda, Win, Win. So, Don, Don, Eh, Inika, Eh, Inika, Inga, E, Nga, E, Gobanjani, Si, Ti, Nga, Pas, Baning, Eh, Abafuni, Zin, Do, Kandi, Omne, Nomnyumdu, Une, Zin, Do, All, Over, Eh, South Africa, Was, Uh, Abuse, Eh, Mi, Te, To, Eh, Koyo, Si, Ti, Snamadungelo, Ba, Um, Asuka, Kupi, Um, Agreet, Eh, Kupi, You, Still Have, Inda, Yo, Kala, Um, Kuku, Zo, Figutome, Um, Asange, Uvunyel, Because, Kuya, Bonagadu, Aba, Na, Baninzi, Ma, Beteta, Gle, Mi, Traba, Ba, Sal, Aguyo, Mangela, Mi, Kuku, Eh, Lem, Mi, Kuku, Ya, Bo, I, Corregist, Eh, Kung, Okuzi, Kaja, Nukalinda, Win, Uzaz, Muti, Alkost, Eh, Chord, Goba, Ma, Ngaku, Regist, Eh, Alkost, Eh, Chord. So, Eh, With Me, Nifunukon, Kuti, Eh, Department, Le, Na, Jenga, Is, A, Na, De, Bill, Eh, Department of Housing and Settlement, Yonke, Londo, Leo, Human Settlement, Ina, Yo, Injela, Eh, Kuti, Kute, No, Kute, Nenga, Monetary, Eh, Establish, Eh, Amatins, Like, Si, Se, Pre, The, Ve, Le, Ngu, Eh, Kune, Eh, Cape, Wireless, Kung, Goba, Kute, Niku, Um, Asetwa, Um, Asetwa, Eh, Team, Eh, Zotala, Apa, Eh, Monitoring, Goba, Ni, Na, Nge, Genisuke, De, Ngu, Fullmento, Uyonke, Na, Use, Benz, Eh, Ukmonitari, Eh, Zin, Do, Got, Da, Uya, Si, Establish, And then, Nisindo, Sine, Si, Puma, Njel, Eh, As, Like, Abanbe, Kola, Eh, Corruption. So, Nisbuza, Eh, Kuti, Go, Kuna, Eh, Bill, Eh, Is, Eh, Is, Eh, So, Any, Eh, Wa, Kuso, Tatwa, Ama, Opinions, Eh, Batlali, So, Le, Process, Le, Na, Is, Eh, Tata, Eh, Itacheling, Nga, Kanani, If, Mas, Si, Three, Nga, Dendo, Gobani, Se, So, Ha, Mbana, Maybe, Eh, Western Cape, Asa, Nukuti, Go, Tebe, La, Ogany, Thank you.
I am Teba Mudiza, eh, greetings to the chairperson and the team, and I thank the opportunity that has been granted us, to us by parliament for coming all the way to us and educate us about this bill. And it, this bill has come a long way, since nineteen ninety-nine. And I don't understand why did it take so long for this, uh, bill not to be finalized? I, I understand we have rights as the people, but what I want to know, that do I, as a person, have a right to stay in a particular province, get an RDP house, and after that, leave that province and come to another province and build an informal structure and getting a true of getting an RDP house again whilst there is a long list of people who are waiting for their houses? So I really want to know, does anyone have that right of having houses right round? And people who are staying in these informal structures, the informal structures are not secured, in the sense that they are not registered, but some people find it is safe for them to stay there, whether they are in three, in one shack or four in one shack. So I'm really concerned about that, it is very scary. And secondly, I want to know, the Department of Human Settlement, yes, it is involved for passing laws and some of the laws are, looks very good on paper, but why can't this department set up teams in different areas? Those teams should be tasked to monitor those areas. So I, I'm concerned about that, because to me, it's clear that government does, uh, pass laws, but government is lazy to do oversight on those who supposed to be the implementers. So I wish that should be taken care of. And furthermore, yes, we are here today to take our views on this bill, we empower you, but what I need to know, how long will this bill take for it to reach its final stages? Because I understand we are not the only province, there are other provinces, but I'm very interested to know, how long does it, does it have to take for it to be finalized? Thank you.
Thank you very much, for the, all the inputs. There are issues that are clarified, which are not part of the issues that need to be discussed further, which supposed to go into the bill? Because this bill, it's one of the bill that wants to regulate the building industry in the country, but you have other bills that govern the, the housing itself. Like, we have the housing code, which specify who must qualify to get a house? And, um, what process has to be followed for you to get a house?
Eh, Si, Lapango, Kukune, Zindo, Eh, Zite, Za, Pakanyeswa, Apa, Eh, Zitinga, Oke, Zikatris, We, Si, Uneye, Keso, Eh, Apa, Si, Lekela, El, Pelleleyo, Si, Nabu, Abandu, Abanu, Katris, Kuti, Ngobani, Uni, Lungelo, Lukuti, Anga, Fu Manai, Indu, Oka, Nyano, Fakis, Kalos, Kuenza, Indu, Nogba, Eh, Pinama, Nyatil, Fini, Keta, Jatiwe, Kua, Kona, Eh, Bills, Ke, Ziyashi, Ashiana, Zikona, Eh, Bills, Eh, Zitinga, Kuti, Zio, Yoye, Indu, Eh, Wiso, Umte, To, Eh, Si, We, Pelleleyo, Na, Eh, Lo, To, Alena, Yichile, Zama, Pond, Eh, Si, Be, Kona, Eh, Zinye, Ekfunke, Kala, Kuzulu, Eh, Kuma, Kandel, Oh, Atile, Okuzi, Zmeno, Kua, Zo, Puni, Eh, So.
Here, the Wetsontwerp is dogestel, want ons weet, yele, yeh, Probleme. So ons, it here, the Wetsontwerp, ingebreng, om yele, te help, om yele, Probleme, of issues, out, te sortier. Here, the Wetsontwerp, gaan ook via, eh, Process, scheer, et ons is hier vandaag, om via, eh, here, eh, Process, te verdeidlik, wat gevolg moet word, om yele, Probleme, antes priek. Danki.
And the, those other legislation that support, that's why this legislation was saying, were repealing, were repealing the old legislation, so that this legislation can be aligned to other legislations. For instance, when housing or any project has to be built in the country, wherever, there must be a steering committee for that project, which supposed to be, consist of people who are staying in those areas. Whether it's water project, whether it's housing project, whether it's electricity project, any service delivery project that has to be built in any part of the country, there must be a steering committee, which must be part, monitor the implementation of the project itself.
Enige plek in the land, war da, it's moet gebouw word, eh, verdins moet gelever word, of it, na, water, of electricity, eh, of bouw, of wat, okal, di projekt is, moet da, eh, commiteer angestel word, wat here, eh, process bestier. Ma, kisak, wat it is ni, here, eh, steering committee, of bestiers commiteer, gaan here, eh, project loads, en bestier, en monitor. Ma, kisak, water, electricity, bouw, of wat, wakal ni, alla areas in South Africa, woral, woral wa, yele, won.
Chengo, Kosi, Lo, Kuti, Eh, Lum, Eh, Bills, Se, Nga, Yo, Apa, Injongo, Zayo, Kukuzula, Lum, Te, To, Um, Dala, Ukoyo, Kuba, Unai, Me, Ba, Etile, Onga, Eh, Kukiyo, Oka, Ny, Onga, Onga, Nge, Di, Band, Unga, Uku, Yo, Eh, Le, Eh, Mi, Te, To, Ke, Iya, Shiyashiana, Eh, Miny, Mi, Te, To, Kya, Nyazile, Kuti, Ka, Is, Okuzi, Ibe, Yase, Benz, Eh, Kufunele, Ba, Kubekoma, Kandel, Oh, Atile, Abandu, Kanya, Eh, Umze, Ke, Lo, Kuba, Mbapa, Lenda, Oseta, Kuyo, Kuso, Funeke, Kuvulwe, Eh, Eh, Kuso, Fula, Eh, Project, Eh, Amazi, Kuya, Funeke, Abeko, Eh, Committee, Kuto, Assisting Committee, Local Committee, Knyazile, Kile, Eh, Uke, Abandu, Eh, Nda, Uli, Na, Kute, To, Anga, Yo, So, Eh, 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 Mi, Te, To, Ke, Eh, Nen, Te, La, Eh, Shiana, Ga, Zo, Okuse, Benz, Eh, Jenga, Eh, Jenga, Lo, Eh, Me, Kwenja, Log, Chengo, Ba, Se, Chi, Lo, Ke, Won, Na, Le, Na, Eh, Bill, Injongo, Zayo, Kukuzula, Ke, Um, Te, To, Um, Dala, Koi.
And, and there is a question why this, the other bill has to be repealed? Is because this, the new, this new bill has to align with some of those legislation that, um, like your, your, your PFMA, eh, your, eh, promotion, justice promotion bill. So, that, this legislation, it's, it's amended or was amended, but as other legislation were passed, like your, your PFMA of nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-nine, then this law, these other housing laws must then align to that legislation, because that is the main legislation.
Eh, Kubekombozo, Ba, Ke, Kung, Goba, Kute, Nilo, Um, Te, To, Um, Manai, Uthonyelo, Man, Uthonyelo, Is, Eh, Zatuzesi, Ka, Kuko, Eh, Miny, Eh, Mi, Te, To, Eh, Ya, Puni, Eh, Engo, Lumenayo, Kunya, Nogba, Kiuwa, Kwe, Zin, Do, Kuya, Knyazile, Kuti, Lum, Um, Te, To, Ukoyo, Ma, Wenz, Eh, Utungelani, Kunya, Na, Lum, Mi, Te, To, Umze, Ke, Lum, Te, To, Eh, PFMA, Eh, Ka, Nineteen, Nineteen, Nan, Kunya, No, Um, Te, To, Administration, Promotion of Administration of Justice, Eh, Mi, Te, To, Njalo, Eh, Ambelan, Na, Kunya, Nogba, Kiuwa, Eh, Zin, Do, Lum, Te, To, U, Umele, Yo, Ngoku, Ah, Utungelani, Na, Le, Eh, Mi, Te, To, Ibe, Yonke, Le, Mi, Te, To, Is, Benz, Eh, Njado, So, Kuenza, Se, Zin, Do, Lum, Na, Geno, Si, Se, Na, Oh, Si, Zama, Njel, Ba, Lum, Mi, Te, To, Ma, Eh, Tungelani, Eh, Ambelan, Eh, Indo, Ba, Ma, We, We, Eh, 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 Amendwa, Eh, Te, To, Kuti, Kuko, Eh, Duwe, Etile, Eh, Pume, Galen, Kwa, Pela, Kuko, Eh, U, Ambelan, Na, Kua, Ma, Klaisha, Ba, Ma, Kube, Tungelani.
What is the main ball, that you spoke about? The name, eh, You, The, Call, The Name?
The PFMA.
Eh, here, the wetgeving, Wat, Na, Ou, For, Ons, Le, Mut, Met, Al, Di, Other, Wetgeving, Belain, Dit, Is, Di, Reda, How, Come, Ons, Here, Eh, Wetgeving, Anpass, So, That, Di, Erste, Wetgeving, Was, Ni, Inline, Inbelain, Med, Di, Hoof, Wetsontwerp, Ni, So, Ons, It, Here, Eh, Veranderinge, Voorgestel, Eh, Be, Will, Implementeer, So, That, Dit, Alles, Inline, Is, Inbelain, Met, Mekar, Med, Di, Hoof, Wetsontwerp.
Like, this legislation will be administered, administered by Department of Human Settlement and NHBRC. And NHBRC, the, this legislation were giving them powers to be a regulatory board on building of houses in the country.
Lum, Te, To, Ke, Si, Tetanga, On, Kuku, Uzo, Be, Ulaula, Alisebe, Zo, Ksal, Sa, Golundu, Kua, Kona, Kunya, Ne, NHBRC, Eh, Eh, NHBRC, Inikwa, Eh, Kunya, Lum, Te, To, Ba, Ma, Ibe, Eh, Yoye, Eh, Li, Bunga, Lum, Lawla, Kuxishi, No, Lo, Zo, Kua, Kiuwa, Se, Zin, Do, No, Ba, Ke, Ngaba, Ke, Aba, 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 Ng, Wango, Lo, Oka, Ny, Eh, Ba, Aba, Ke, Aba, Sakasa, Yo, Bon, Ke, Abandu, Aba, Kuxishi, No, Lo, Kua, Kiuwa, Kwe, Zin, Do, Kufan, Eh, Indo, Ba, Ke, Ba, Be, Pant, Kola, Lum, Le, NHBRC.
So, here, the wetgeving, Word, Gerereguleer, Dear, The NHBRC, Here, The Nationale Boue Regulerings Raad, Here, The Raad, Reguleer, Here, The Wetgeving. So, As, Eh, The Raad, Angestel, Om, Alles, War, Di, Wetgeving, Will, He, Moet, Geimplementeer, Word, Te, Monitor, So, Eh, The NHBRC, The, Eh, Here, The Nationale Bauistings Raad, Gan, Di, Mag, He, Om, Here, Eh, Voorstellen, Wat, In, Here, Wetsontwerp, Is, Te, Monitor, Eh, Seker, Te, Maak, Dit, Wort, Uitgevoer.
And therefore, it then says, this legislation, if you build a house, you have to register, you have to register a house through the You have to register a house through the the builder, your builder that you employ. He must be or she must be a person who's enrolled with NHBRC. So that when your house has got those structural defects or leakage of roof, then you are able to claim from the warranty fund that the NHBRC would have established.
So, and then you know what is bow? That what you do it secure make, that the bower, the man what your house can bow, the frau, the maatskapij, who what all your house now can bow, that person or organization must by here the Board, the NHBRC, registered word. Want, and then your house, the duck away. He crack, the foundation work not. One thing is now stickend. Net now, fat you die registration number from that bower or that maatskapij. And you can now, your warburg can ice. But as the, the, the bower, neither registered is by the NHBRC not, can you not your warburg, for the stickende good or the good what break, can ice not? This is the do of the NHBRC. We try help, that he well, your warburg can ice. When the bower is reeds registered by here the organization, the NHBRC, the National Building Regulations Board.
Therefore, the NHBRC is a regulatory body. Therefore, it, the bill give its mandate to employ inspectors, that will make sure that as the houses have been built in the country, they get, they get monitored from the, when the house is built from the ground level until at the roof level. That's why, after passing this legislation, the NHBRC would have enough inspectors on the ground to monitor the building of houses. Because, why the NHBRC? Because NHBRC must be constituted by people who are having skills in the building industry.
And now, your house will now be registered dear maatskapij, or what gebouw is dear maatskapij, what by the NHBRC registered is. So the house will be monitored dear the bower inspector. From foundation flak, mere to dak worte. This is how come the bower inspector now outcome, um, to kijk of the foundation regge go is. Volgens the NHBRC, what all there the mense what op that span work, must be registered was, then betekend it, helle the no de gevaardige de, the skills, um, the ice to can bow. And as come there a ko kololi, what neither the NHBRC registered is not, the bower inspector can not come monitor not, the project is see registered not. And then can you not, as I it's fault can, ice not? So and now, what come a bower inspector out, what here the yele process come monitor? And come secure make, that the NHBRC, your house is registered, the project is registered, and all what are work, he the no de gevaardigheid, um, via a qualiteit, house to can ge.
I'm happy that we have councillors in this meeting. The bill further says that, if the municipalities, the implementing agency in terms of RDP, they are not, they are not enrolling these houses with the NHBRC. Therefore, the municipality, through the MMC, who is responsible for human settlement, or the member of the executive council, who is the MEC for housing, here you call them the minister. If when, as they build these houses, they are not registering these houses with the NHBRC, they are going to be liable with if they, these houses has structural defects or they are leaking. As themselves, not as the, as the, as, as government, themselves, because the bill is requiring them to register these houses with the NHBRC. So that NHBRC can then take the responsibility. If there is a structural defect, that there is a roof leak, then people will be able to claim through the warranty funds. then people will be able to claim through the warranty funds.
I is by dankbar, that the event of rats leader is I is by dankbar, that the event of rats leader is in municipality verteenworrigers. in municipality verteenworrigers. I will it verdeidlich stel. I will it verdeidlich stel. The NHBRC and here the rats, rats leader must secure make that house The NHBRC and here the rats, rats leader must secure make that house registered is, and the project is registered by the NHBRC. registered is, and the project is registered by the NHBRC. Now, and now, a house that registered is by the NHBRC, Now, and now, a house that registered is by the NHBRC, must then secure a vereistesvoldoen. must then secure a vereistesvoldoen. Qualiteit word now for secure. Qualiteit word now for secure. So that is the crack, and as there a crack is, then must here the NHBRC can then So that is the crack, and as there a crack is, then must here the NHBRC can then verantwerlikkeit neem, and secure make, verantwerlikkeit neem, and secure make, that there the mense what are gebouwd, anspreklikke gau word now. that there the mense what are gebouwd, anspreklikke gau word now. For here the kraken, mere what infal, dakke what uitval, dreine what geblok is. For here the kraken, mere what infal, dakke what uitval, dreine what geblok is. But then can helle you bystaan, um, met your project number, But then can helle you bystaan, um, met your project number, um, that your ice and your project registered is, um, that your ice and your project registered is, by the NHBRC, your geld, your warburg can ice. by the NHBRC, your geld, your warburg can ice. So this is a qualiteitsverzekeringsproces, So this is a qualiteitsverzekeringsproces, what you can bystaan, in the yele bouwproces, what you can bystaan, in the yele bouwproces, so that you not, uh, swak, slordige, lende land, uit mekaarval, ice can crein. so that you not, uh, swak, slordige, lende land, uit mekaarval, ice can crein.
And the bill further says, if the inspector, And the bill further says, if the inspector, who would have qualification in terms of building environment skills? who would have qualification in terms of building environment skills? If he, he monitor these houses If he, he monitor these houses and pass houses that have the structural defect and pass houses that have the structural defect or houses would leak, or houses would leak, then that inspector will be liable as an individual? then that inspector will be liable as an individual?
The wet papal voort start in dean, the bower inspector, The wet papal voort start in dean, the bower inspector, what angewais is, what angewais is, om je ice te kom goed keer. om je ice te kom goed keer, on foundation flak, mere, dak, enzovoorts, the yele proces. On foundation flak, mere, dak, enzovoorts, the yele proces. And there the ice is by the NHBRC registered. And there the ice is by the NHBRC registered. Then, and then come kraken, or it's gebeer, there is a fault in your ice. Then, and then come kraken, or it's gebeer, there is a fault in your ice. Then word the bower, what by the NHBRC registered is, Then word the bower, what by the NHBRC registered is, there the bower, word anspreklikke gau. there the bower, word anspreklikke gau. And as the bower inspector it goed keer, and there come fault, And as the bower inspector it goed keer, and there come fault, then word the bower inspector anspreklikke gau. then word the bower inspector anspreklikke gau. So all word anspreklikke gau, maar slechts as the project So all word anspreklikke gau, maar slechts as the project by the NHBRC registered is. by the NHBRC registered is. Slechts dan, can you ice? Slechts dan, can you ice? Slechts dan, can the bower inspector, and the bower, Slechts dan, can the bower inspector, and the bower, anspreklikke gau word, for faulte, what in your ice plasvind? anspreklikke gau word, for faulte, what in your ice plasvind?
And then on the beneficiaries, there were people who were raising the issue of the beneficiaries, And then on the beneficiaries, there were people who were raising the issue of the beneficiaries, that elderly who are not being prioritized, houses, that elderly who are not being prioritized, houses, very prior beneficial list, very prior beneficial list, prioritize young people than elderly. prioritize young people than elderly. The minister has taken a decision with MECs of provinces that The minister has taken a decision with MECs of provinces that all the beneficial list must prioritize elderly people, all the beneficial list must prioritize elderly people, people with disability, and child headed families. people with disability, and child headed families. If municipalities, because you are the ones that are responsible If municipalities, because you are the ones that are responsible to draw this list, if you are not prioritizing those category of people, to draw this list, if you are not prioritizing those category of people, so unvisa as parliament, put in the, in the account. so unvisa as parliament, put in the, in the account.
Okay, the municipality, the municipality, it voorts, here the Wetzonsberg, Okay, the municipality, the municipality, it voorts, here the Wetzonsberg, cry helle the mag in the reg, on beginstigd is, cry helle the mag in the reg, on beginstigd is, what op a lies geplas word, dit slide in gestremd is, kinder roof, what op a lies geplaas word, dit slide in gestremd is, kinder roof, househoudings, where a househouding dear a kind gele word, househoudings, where a househouding dear a kind gele word, bejaard is, enzovoorts, helle, word op a lies geplaas. bejaard is, enzovoorts, helle, word op a lies geplaas. And the municipality, the mag, om here the mense te help. And the municipality, the mag, om here the mense te help. And then a cry voerkeer. And then a cry voerkeer.
Sir, and the minister had make that commitment, Sir, and the minister had make that commitment, that he, she is going to work on the database. that he, she is going to work on the database. We will put the system that would not make it possible We will put the system that would not make it possible for anybody to change the list. for anybody to change the list. As members of parliament, we are monitoring that process. As members of parliament, we are monitoring that process. Immediately, minister has finalize the system, Immediately, minister has finalize the system, improve the system that we have. improve the system that we have. Then we, we are going to monitor Then we, we are going to monitor the beneficial release throughout the country, the beneficial release throughout the country, through that system, with the minister and the provincial legislatures. through that system, with the minister and the provincial legislatures.
The minister can doet secure make, that say met here the lies van beginstigd is, The minister can doet secure make, that say met here the lies van beginstigd is, what gestremd is, kinder roof, leiers, en bejaard is, in slide, what gestremd is, kinder roof, leiers, en bejaard is, in slide, can voerkeer cry. can voerkeer cry. Here the lies can op a databases geplaas word, and a stelsel can geimplementeer word, Here the lies can op a databasis geplaas word, and a stelsel can geimplementeer word, what here the lies monitor. what here the lies monitor. And doet secure make, niemand can daran verander not. And doet secure make, niemand can daran verander not. And mense van die lies afval, and andere mense op die lies plas not. And mense van die lies afval, and andere mense op die lies plas not. Municipaliteite can hande vat, met the regering and the minister. Municipaliteite can hande vat, met the regering and the minister. And helle can doet secure make, that here the databasis en stelsel And helle can doet secure make, that here the databasis en stelsel degelijk gemonitor word, and it is regge earth South Africa, degelijk gemonitor word, and it is regge earth South Africa, precies op diezelfde wijze geimplementeer word, where here the beginstigd is, precies op diezelfde wijze geimplementeer word, where here the beginstigd is, heel tijd voerkeer zal cry. heel tijd voerkeer zal cry.
There was the issue of the asbestos that were raised. There was the issue of the asbestos that were raised. We should indicate that minister has made that commitment We should indicate that minister has made that commitment to eradicate the roofing of asbestos. to eradicate the roofing of asbestos. And as members of parliament, we are monitoring that. And as members of parliament, we are monitoring that. In the next budget, will be looking at In the next budget, will be looking at how many houses are they going to remove? how many houses are they going to remove? Are they going to remove those asbestos? Are they going to remove those asbestos? Minister has prioritized that to make sure that provinces Minister has prioritized that to make sure that provinces prioritize those houses that were roofed with asbestos. prioritize those houses that were roofed with asbestos. And as parliament, we are, we have actually make indication to provinces, And as parliament, we are, we have actually make indication to provinces, that we are not going to pass any budget that we are not going to pass any budget that does not actually prioritize the removal of asbestos, that does not actually prioritize the removal of asbestos, eradication of madhouses, and the... eradication of madhouses, and the... No, there is asbestos, and what? No, there is asbestos, and what? In madhouses. In madhouses. Madhouses are those houses that are not habitat, habitat for people to stay in. Madhouses are those houses that are not habitat, habitat for people to stay in. If provinces, they come in their business plan, they are not prioritizing those houses. If provinces, they come in their business plan, they are not prioritizing those houses. We are not, we told them that we are not going to pass their budget. We are not, we told them that we are not going to pass their budget. And therefore, they will not actually get any cent from parliament. And therefore, they will not actually get any cent from parliament. They will have to prioritize those houses. They will have to prioritize those houses. Including the block project, those project that were left by contractors, Including the block project, those project that were left by contractors, staying so long. staying so long. Minister has given herself three years to eradicate them. Minister has given herself three years to eradicate them. And we are going to monitor that as members of parliament, And we are going to monitor that as members of parliament, to make sure that indeed those houses, they get finished, to make sure that indeed those houses, they get finished, and, and beneficial is get their houses. and, and beneficial is get their houses.
And now, the minister has made that commitment to eradicate the roofing of asbestos. And now, the minister has made that commitment to eradicate the roofing of asbestos. With regard to the asbestos problem that is offered, the minister has already decided that all asbestos walls are removed and removed. In the next expansion, there will be money to be spent on asbestos walls replaced with regular walls. In no expansion, for no province, good again will be done, or spending will be provided for projects where asbestos walls are still in the list. Provinces will monitor this. Also with regard to modern houses, this will also be removed, and no spending or expansion will be good again, what will be used in asbestos walls. This will be strongly monitored, and it will be made sure that the beginning is started for a house.
There are other issues that were raised, that needed for inclusion in the bill. I won't respond on them, because it's about, we have to look at the general input that were made. This is our last leg here in Western Cape. We are going to sit down as the committee and look at those issues, and include them in the bill before we submit our reports to parliament. With issues that you have raised, table them there with our staff. We are going to put them in a report. It will become our program, which we are going to call the municipalities and the provinces to respond to those issues, and if they don't respond to the issues that you have raised there, we are not going to pass their budget.
I can say, 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 I can say.
We are committed, thank you for the input, we will do everything, all the input that is registered, all the problems will be done, and it will be made sure that municipal times and provincial governments also have knowledge of all here the input and questions that are registered here. The government will not expand further on provinces, good again with regard to spending for houses, and they will not use here the input and here the situation now, and now.
The last thing is that we want to, we are not going to allow follow-ups. People have been seated for quite some time. Our apologies, we have to visit one of the areas because we have been petitioned as parliament by Councila Mangaliso, so at Mandela area. So we are going there now as a committee to look at the issues that has raised, and we want to thank you very much for having interacted with us, and we have heard you that you are saying that even parliament, you must do strengthen your monetary part, and we have listened to you, and we are going to communicate again with the provincial legislature, because they are supposed, when we live here, they are supposed to be the people who take your issues up and then communicate with us at national. But we will actually work our collaboration with the provincial legislatures, that including our councillors, that everybody must do his part so that our people can get the proper services.
I can say, 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 I can say,
Will that in that note request, oh, sorry, sorry.
We are going to ask parliament to do a petition request, we will withdraw, we thank you, and I will assure you that we will communicate with the provincial government and together we will solve your problems and make sure that it is approved. This is the working of the government, the provincial parliament, and all your problems and questions will be resolved.
With that note, we are going to request any volunteer to come and pray for us and close this meeting with a prayer.
At this moment, I would like to ask you, who is the most willing, what for us here the offering with prayer will end, thank you?
I can say, 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 I can say.
And because of time, we have NHPRC outside, they can just rise and be seen, so that anybody who wants information about NHPRC, they can come in front as we pray, so that anybody who need information about NHPRC, people can know who must contact. Can we ask them to come in front? NHPRC, these are members of, these are our team that are working in NHPRC led by Mr. Muthongo. They have listened to what you have been saying, because of time, will not actually give them time to speak.
I can say, 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 I can say.
And then we have one from the department, Mr. Sololo is here too, who was responsible for writing this bill. Mr. Sololo can come and people can see you.
I can say, 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 I can say.
So your issues has been captured correctly, and all of us who are going to make sure that we respond to them. Can we get the volunteer to pray for us?
I can say, 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 I
Let's close our...